Committee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please. Paul? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Donna, can you hear?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even, that didn't recognize your name. Yes, present. Ms. Gately?
Present.
Mr. Sadoway?
Present.
Mr. Castellanos?
Present.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
And Mayor McGee?
Present.
All present, observing, we have Superintendent Tutwiler, Deputy Superintendent Powers, Deputy Superintendent Regiro, Business Manager, Mr. McHugh, Secretary of the School Committee, Mary Jewels, and Attorney John Myhouse. First thing on the agenda is a budget transfer to fund the manager of financial operation position placed on there by Mayor McGee.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Member Capola. I think, I think Mike Bertino was on, uh, uh, he, I know he's here just for some, uh, some backup on, on, on what's going on. So just to lay out a couple of things that I want, that I think are really important that we need to take up, um, uh, tonight and would like to take it up at the full meeting. I know we've, uh, sent out some information related to this, uh, and I really appreciate the chance to work with the Personnel Subcommittee, um, on, on these two important matters. Uh, just to, to start off, and I know we've been talking about this since the summer, to, uh, address the 10 schools, the ventilation issues on the 10 schools, we're spending around $6 million to get that, uh, work done. I know the preliminary work is being, being done, but, uh, we needed to identify dollars and we had requested a waiver with support of the committee to, from DESI to utilize our savings related to, uh, um, a number of pieces because of in, uh, no interest in learning that were savings were related to our current budget. Uh, DESI has, um, not approved our request for that waiver, which means that those dollars we anticipated to use for our savings are not available to do that project. Uh, what they did propose and instructed us to do is, um, to, to use our ESER 2 money for the project, which is $18 million, uh, which is the federal dollars coming in, uh, to the, to the City of Lynn to address a number of issues related to the pandemic and those dollars, uh, related to the legislation was passed in December, the $908 billion, uh, and the City of Lynn has received, as I said, we had ESER 1 dollars, which we utilized. Uh, these ESER 2 dollars, $18 million, uh, is where we can look to, to make this happen. And I would just, again, reiterate how important this is. We've known from the beginning, uh, that we, when we originally, uh, looked at this, that these schools needed to be addressed, that there was a solution to, uh, the work that had been done in the 1970s, um, to close up the ventilation in those 10 schools. Uh, some of us that remember those times when the energy costs were through the roof and communities like Lynn couldn't fund the, the, uh, didn't have the money to fund the, uh, the cost for, uh, heating the schools at the time. So those ventilation systems were closed to, uh, allow us to save money and be able to heat the schools without the heat going up through the ventilation systems. Obviously, that wasn't the optimal way to handle it, but, uh, that was what was going on in the 70s and it was, um, challenges at that time as well as we face every year on, on, on this committee. So, um, so the, the, the good news is that we have that $18 million and I'm recommending, and, and what we need to do to make this happen, is approve and have, uh, allow these school, uh, department and through Kevin McHugh to, uh, apply, and we have to apply by March 31st to utilize those ESER 2 money dollars. We could utilize them if we approve that right away. Those dollars can then be allocated directly for that project, uh, and we can get moving on that project right away. It's ready to go. Uh, the procurement is in place. We're using it as part of, uh, 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 prior contracts for energy, uh, on energy savings. We've talked with, uh, Mike Bertino and I've talked to, uh, the purchasing department. We've worked through this. It's ready to go. Some of the preliminary work, as I said, related to some a little bit of asbestos and other preliminary work is being done, uh, that's, uh, we can do under the current net school spending dollars that are allocated through ISD. Um, so that, I, 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 so let me, let me finish up and then we can get into some questions, if that's okay, Michael. I'll just kind of finish my discussion on that. So that, that's one piece of this puzzle. And so I think, again, I, I believe strongly and I think we've made this commitment to get this done. We want to get the work done and these dollars are available. The dollars that, uh, weren't part of the waiver or not be, will be utilized, they're not going away. Those money, that money is still available. That money can be, that money, that money can still be, that money can still be used, um, we currently, we currently use those dollars from the ISD Department to do other, other work, uh, in the schools. So that money isn't disappearing, it's just we can't use it for this. You know, we need a waiver, so we spend, uh, we, we go above our cap and then we're spending substantially more than we're allowed under net school spending. So they've indicated that, you know, again, those dollars are still here, but for us to do this major project that they have recommended, that we take the ESER dollars from the federal government. In addition, which plays into my next piece of, uh, of, uh, a proposal, uh, to add, uh, or refund the position of manager of financial operations. As part of the President Biden, uh, legislation, there will be ESER 3 dollars, which, um, it's not clear what, how much those dollars will be. Uh, the ESER 2 dollars need to be, so we need, again, we need to get this approved so we can start the work right away. These dollars can be spent up through, uh, 2022. The dollars that are coming in, subject to the latest legislation at the federal level, those dollars will become available to us in addition to the $18 million. And those funds can be used, uh, uh, as we determine how to use them as a city and for the schools as well through 20, December 31st of 2024. So there are, uh, both ESER 2 and ESER 3 dollars that will be coming in. From my perspective, this is, this investment is critical for us to get these schools back in play and get students and, and, and teachers and administrators and those go, once the work is completed, uh, to, for long term, to have a circulation system that works for everyone. Uh, as with seeing these, this substantial influx of dollars coming in, this specific criteria that needs to be used related to those dollars, uh, that, uh, if we don't use them in the appropriate way, then we could, you know, at a cer- certain time, the feds could come back in and say you didn't use them properly and we would then have to find money within our own budget to fund something that we believed was appropriately being spent through the federal dollars. So, um, looking at that, looking at at least $170 million budget or plus on the school side, the kind of work that goes on and these new dollars that'll be coming in through the next several years, uh, with specific, with specific requirements related to that, I think, you know, I believe it's really important for us to then also put in place on the financial team, a position that hasn't been funded, but has been funded in the past, the manager of financial operations. Again, that's a key piece of making sure we allocate and manage these funds, uh, in our district appropriately, um, that wasn't funded in the 2021 budget. Uh, so, again, those are the two pieces. Uh, if there's, I, I know Mike Bertino's on the call, uh, because he understands the, uh, you know, the one that the dollars are coming in, which is a good thing. Uh, but it's important that we utilize them in the right way and that we have the pieces in place to spend them properly and make, make sure that we have the, the, the team in place, particularly on us, this, the kind of budget we're seeing. And anticipating an increase in dollars on the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, it seems like we're in a much different place at the state level from where we were last year, uh, when we had no idea of what the budget was going to look like, where, where we were going to be, whether or not we're going to have, we were looking at it either, uh, level funding or cutting of, uh, Chapter 70 as well as city side. That is, it, it's a much different landscape, uh, both at, at, at the local level and state level with local dollars and state dollars coming in from the federal government, from this, uh, really, I mean, it's really exciting that the, uh, the $1.9 trillion is available. Uh, I was watching, uh, President Biden's press conference today, uh, and he specifically spoke to, uh, the needs, uh, in communities like land states and cities and, and, and counties and talked about ventilation and other investments that are definitely appropriate and available through the federal dollars coming in, both through ESER 2 and ESER 3. So that's kind of an overview and I want to, I, I just wanted to finish, uh, I, uh, I know there's plenty of time for questions and thoughts, but I, uh, I think both of these are important, uh, very important pieces of what we want to do. I think, uh, particularly with the, uh, in a positive way, seeing the dollars come in and help us start to address what we've talked about over the last several years in terms of, uh, making a major investment and what we need to do in terms of increasing our staffing and bringing the, the Lynn school system up to where it needs to be with the anticipation of, uh, you know, Student Opportunity Act dollars starting to be reallocated in this budget as well as federal dollars. I really believe these two, uh, requests are appropriate, uh, important and something that we can proactively do to, to really, uh, take full advantage of the dollars, make the investments that we want to make and, and start to, uh, um, see some of the progress that I don't, I know we all want to make. So that's, that's kind of a, um, overview of what we're doing, but my, my request would be the Personnel Committee approve both of these, um, um, proposals, get it up to the full committee tonight and we can try and get it done tonight. So that's, uh, happy to take questions or, uh, discussion on that. Thank you, uh.
First, can I just ask, was there ever revised the agenda? Because I only have a, uh, Personnel Subcommittee agenda that just says for the job, not for the other.
Um.
Aren't his budget transfer to fund the manager of financial operations position?
No, he, he said that he has two things. He's talking about.
I'm talking about two things. I think probably on the Personnel side, uh, Donna, it's the, uh, the funding, the position. Uh, I think the larger piece is probably more general and Personnel Committee specific. Um, that's on the agenda as well. It should be on the agenda. That was my request to put it on the agenda, so.
Okay, I, I'm just going to read you what's on this agenda. It says, budget transfer to fund the manager of financial operation position by Mayor McGee. Now, it's not on, the other part is not on there, so.
It's on, you, you know what? It's on, it's actually on the general agenda under Dr. Tutwiler, I think.
Okay.
So I, but I bring that up because I, I think it's important to probably link the two discussions together, uh, because I think, one, to identify that the ESER dollars, which we're asking to be used and future ESER dollars are really, uh, something that we're going to, we will really need to keep, um, uh, close, close eye on. So, uh, I think you're, you're, you're right, uh, Chair, Chairwoman Capola, uh, uh, but I think they, in, in many respects, they linked all of the pers- the, the request for the Personnel Committee is to fund the position.
Just for the position. Okay. I, I think I saw, um, Michael Sadoway's hand over. Unless Mr. Bertini wants to speak. Did you want, Mayor, did you want, uh, Michael to speak on anything in particular or could be those questions?
He's, he's here for questions. I don't know if Mike, if you want to add anything, but, uh, I think, you know, I think he's here for questions related to, to that discussion.
Okay. Attorney Sadoway.
Um, Kevin, um, uh, Mr. McHugh, um, what's, is this position that we're talking about, is, is, is this similar to the position that you asked, uh, the committee for, um, I believe last year?
Uh, yes, uh, the one, I, I was going to change the title back then, but this position, uh, did exist back, uh, probably in 2008, 2009, and the person ended up retiring. And at the same time, we had a reduction and we were laying staff off. And at that time, I felt it wasn't, you know, I, I could try to live without it as best I could. So this position already does exist in the bargaining unit and everything else, but it, this is similar. It's the same thing, just a different title.
Uh, is it the same pay scale? Is it the same responsibility?
Uh, the, the responsibility is the same. The pay is already in the, uh, in administrator's union, uh, contract. The other one, we never really got that any further than, uh, the pay scale on the other one. But that would have had to been bargained anyways through the union.
Okay. Um, and, uh, the reason, obviously, uh, my assumption is the reason why we're, we're seeking this position again is, is for all the former reasons that you presented to the committee, uh, in addition to a substantial amount of, of federal dollars coming into the district.
Uh, yes, they, these, these federal dollars, uh, just to give you a little bit of history, we received, um, I want to say at least 10, 12, a good 10, 12, somewhere between 10 and 12 years ago, a large substantial amount of federal dollars. And, uh, uh, actually, as the mayor, uh, stated, that there are really stringent spending requirements, um, traveling, you know, making sure all our, you know, our I's are dotted, T's are crossed and everything else, because it, we actually did receive an audit after that and they were on the, when the federal audit comes, they were here for two weeks on site. And, uh, at the time, we were putting, uh, some electronic, uh, some, uh, route equipment up in the ceiling. They were up in the ceilings taking serial numbers and they track every piece of, uh, devices or anything you buy, they want to see it to prove that the federal dollars were used. So the paperwork on this is very extensive and time consuming, uh, when you get these large federal dollars. And I, I tell people that we're like, what, the fifth, fourth or fifth largest school district in the state. We're a prime candidate to be audited, uh, once these dollars are, you know, executed in the next few years down the road. So we just want to make sure that we have everything spent properly, all the proper paperwork and all the backup that we need. Uh, so, uh, in case an audit ever came up and they said, well, we don't have proper backup or paperwork, then they could turn it to the city and say, you need to, uh, refund those dollars back to the federal government. And we don't want to have that happen to us.
And just a quick follow-up question to Mike. Mike, are, are the, are the funds going to flow through the city or are they going directly to the, uh, school department?
The, the funds, the funds will flow, um, well, essentially what will happen, you apply for the grant, you'll send it over to the, um, the council, we'll vote it as an available fund and you'll be able to, um, budget and allocate the money according to your application. So ESER 2 is under the direction of the school, just like ESER 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Attorney Nicholson.
Thank you, Member Capola. Um, I just had a couple of questions about the, uh, about the ESER funding and the operational savings that Mayor McGee mentioned. Uh, first on the operational savings, that makes sense what you laid out. I mean, I'm glad that we're going to have the funds to make those improvements because they're, they're, they're critical. Um, and, uh, and as you mentioned, we're still going to have the operational savings. And my understanding is that there, the, that's going to, that's going to come back before us in, uh, April for us to make that determination about how to, um, make best, the best use of those operational savings. And this time, they're going to have to be, uh, accountable towards net school spending. Um, so I just want to confirm, that was, that was the right understanding of what, of what the, of what the implications are for that, about the savings. Maybe Mr. McHugh, uh, or Dr. Tutwiler, someone can take that.
Yes, uh, Mr. Nicholson, on the school side, if you recall, I think some time ago, we had this conversation at a school committee meeting and I was going to bring back at the first meeting in April, that I would bring any unused budgetary funds because obviously I do have savings in like substitute accounts because we don't have substitute. So I'm compiling that and then we were going to come back to you guys with a, uh, school committee with a list of what we would recommend to use those towards. And then that way, they would count towards net school spending and we could get those projects rolling quicker than later.
Got it. Okay, that's great. Um, and then on the ESER funding, uh, you know, we, uh, the, the district led a, a pretty robust public input process, the last influx of funding that came through the Student Opportunity Act. And so we have that, that work available. Obviously, the needs have changed significantly, uh, since then. Just wondering, and maybe Dr. Tutwiler could speak to this, wondering what kind of, um, uh, input gathering we'll be doing as we plan, uh, those expenditures for the, for the ESER funding, uh, to, to, to make sure that though, that, that money is being, um, used, sort of, uh, we're making the most of that money in response to the needs that, that educators and families are identifying.
Yeah, uh, so what I would say quickly is, um, you know, some of the work involves, uh, diving deeper and getting more details around what the money can be spent on. Like I, I, I don't know that it's, um, you know, as wide a, a, a category of, uh, expenditures, uh, as maybe folks might want, but once we have a clear understanding on that, uh, and a clear understanding on where our savings are, uh, and so forth, and where those, where those funds are, are, are going, uh, I do think it'd be a good idea to, to revisit, um, you know, uh, public input on, um, you know, where those dollars should go. The work that we did last year on the Student Opportunity Act was, was pretty robust, right? We, there's a lot of fingerprints on that plan. Uh, and, you know, Student Opportunity Act fell through, uh, for FY21. Uh, the FY22 is supposed to be the first year of it. It wasn't as much as, uh, what was originally promised. Uh, and so, um, I, I think we would still be able to, um, look at fulfilling some of the promises of year one, uh, with the first bucket of input that we got from staff, family, uh, the broader community. Uh, but, but, uh, we're, we're, our, our first, um, you know, the order of operations is to first understand, uh, how the money can be spent, uh, understand where we stand financially, um, now in terms of, or, or, uh, you know, within the next month or so in terms of savings. Uh, and then really begin to do backward work from there.
If I could just follow up on that as well, to, you know, so, um, we had a, I was on the MMA, um, call yesterday with the, uh, um, you know, with some federal, uh, some federal input, uh, some from state, uh, the state finance team, uh, and the, uh, uh, US Conference of, uh, League of Cities, um, representative was on. So they're anticipating, you know, treasury is starting to develop right now, the, uh, the guidelines. They're anticipating probably in the next two weeks, there'll be much more specific guidelines on how all of these dollars can be spent, both on the ESER side as well as the, the state side. And Mike, Mike Bertino and I were talking earlier, uh, I think he was also on a webinar today that, you know, they're starting to hone in on what specifically these, you know, can be used for. You know, like I said today, the president was talking about, um, you know, so, uh, ventilation and, uh, and other investment in schools, not just ventilation, but to make, you know, bringing, you know, asbestos and other challenges that schools face nationwide. It's funny, when he was speaking at the press conference today, it sounded like he was talking about Lynn. Uh, so many, many communities are facing that. So I think that, that, uh, information will become clear and I think all of us will have a chance to see more specifically what the treasury and the federal, uh, guidelines and requirements will be related to that. I don't know, Mike Bertino, if you want to just speak a little bit, I know you were on a webinar, probably similarly starting to just hone in on, on both the dollars availability and then some of the, this, the, uh, the spending that'll be, um, allowed under the, under the current, uh, legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so we have, the city has a potential, you know, huge windfall coming down with this, uh, American Recovery Act. So we're looking at all the webinars, we're attending the webinars, we're looking at all the information. So even beyond this investment we're looking to do, there's probably going to be, you know, two or three or four times that investment into improving the assets of the city, which include the school. Uh, everybody is, is essentially waiting for the guidelines, but the money is coming, half the money's coming this year, half the money's coming next year. We'll have until 2024 to spend it. So it's looking like a real opportunity for us to capitalize on this money and really improve the quality of all of our buildings, improve our technology citywide, um, and a whole bunch of other things, um, that we really can't even, um, discuss right now because we only know of a few things. We're hoping that the US Treasury comes out in the next, um, they'll probably have some draft regulations in the next 21 days and then the final ones will be out in close to 45 or 55 days. And I would assume we would all get together again and, and put all our projects down and really make this pay dividends for us, not only next year, but for, you know, many years to come. But it's quite an opportunity we have. We got a little taste of it, um, trying to prepare these 10 schools for the project and there's going to be a whole lot more improvements done. So, um, we're in a good position.
I think you lost Donna.
And so we're really looking forward, we're really looking forward to hearing the final, um, results.
Got it. Yeah, thank you, everyone. I think, I think that does sound like a great opportunity. I'm glad to hear that we, you know, I, I know we've done a lot of work identifying the capital needs in the city, um, and that, and, and, and the operational needs via the Student Opportunity Act. And, you know, I think it'd be great to have an opportunity to refresh the, the public input, to reflect, uh, changes that have happened, uh, as particularly as technology changes have, have, uh, uh, come to the, to the forefront. Um, but that, yeah, that does sound like a great opportunity and, you know, we've been talking for years about the capital needs, so thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm on the phone now, so I don't know if anybody's raising their hand for any more questions, if you are, um.
Donna, I don't see anyone, but you do have two, two, two logged in, by the way. I, I saw you for a second when you got on.
Okay, uh, on the phone, you mean?
On, on the computer. You have two Donna Capolas.
Okay, I, I shut the computer case because, um, I couldn't, I, 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 no.
If there's no questions, I, I, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Donna, Mike, Mike's making a, raising his hand to make a motion.
Okay. Listen to me.
Um, I, I, I make a motion to transfer $18,086 from the Paris Substitute Account to the Business Administration Salary Account to fund the manager of financial operation position.
Second. Roll call, please. Sorry about that. Ms. Capola? Yes. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next agenda. The kindergarten Elisha, sir. Mrs. Gately.
I, I have been doing a lot of research and looking around. I talked to DESI. Um, I'm really glad, oh, the dog's going to bark, sorry. I'm really happy that, um, on the postings that Sheila O'Neil has the requirement to have an SEI endorsement for certain teaching postings and I want to thank her and I want to thank Dr. Tutwiler for that. Um, the other thing is, um, I was also very happy to be able to go with Mr. Ford to the, um, teachers' union meeting with the kindergarten teachers. And, um, I just don't think we have enough information, enough data on like why kindergarten teachers, uh, the reason for poor performances of students. And, um, we have no data for this model success. So I, I just think we should hire more EL specialists. And I know that we're struggling to find the EL certified specialists. So there are a lot of teachers in this district that have expressed that they would like to get the EL certification. So I think Dr. Tutwiler and I were talking this morning and I think that they should contact people to say, I would like to get this licensure. But what we really need is a pilot for this program. If we have a pilot, like we have a pilot over at Harrington right now for the dual language, we have a pilot for this program, we can see how successful it is. Um, and make sure that we have 45 to 90 minutes in the classroom. That's very key so students can understand, swirl, you know, the speak, write, read and listen that you need to do in a classroom to understand a new language. So, um, I really don't feel as though I can strongly endorse this right now, but have a pilot and hire more ELs to get them in those classrooms so that the kindergarten teachers can have that extra support. It would probably show a great deal of difference and it will probably show a lot of results as they move upward grades 1, 2, 5. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sadoway.
Thank you. Um, you know, obviously, um, o- over the, the past week, we, we've got, uh, a, a lot of feedback from, um, teachers, parents, uh, a- a- about this, uh, particular change that the, um, uh, the district is looking to make. Um, you know, Lynn is a gateway city. It's always been a gateway city. Um, you know, the, the majority of our students, um, are Hispanic. Um, and, and that's, that's something that, uh, is happening right now. So it's not like it's, it's something that we can, we can change or, or, or put a hold on that. So, um, I, I'd like a, additional feedback from Dr. Tutwiler and, um, the, the other guests that are here with us as to if anything has changed since the last meeting, has there been additional thought as to what, uh, you are presenting to us? Um, and, um, um, my assumption is, Dr. Tutwiler, you've, you've heard from the educators as well and, uh, in the community, uh, since the last meeting. So I, I just want to, uh, chime in and, and, and see where, where we're at today, um, because it's important to know.
Yeah, uh, you, you know, first, just a couple of points of clarification. Um, the first, uh, is in the presentation at the last meeting, uh, the committee, the community and later, or earlier this week, uh, the teachers were presented a pretty subtle. uh, the teachers were presented a pretty substantive set of data, uh, rationalizing, uh, you know, this, this proposal. Uh, so I, I just want to be clear, uh, that there is plenty of data supporting this decision. Uh, then the other thing I'd like to say, just as a point of clarification, uh, nowhere in that data set, nowhere in any of the slides presented by the English Learner Education Department, and, uh, nothing, uh, that I've said has indicated that this is about kindergarten teachers not doing a good job. That, that has never been what this is about. This is about shifting and creating a model that supports who's in those classrooms, the vast majority of who's in those classrooms. The other point of clarification that I want to make is that the SEI endorsement is not a union-driven thing, it is a state-driven thing. I just want to make sure that that is clear, that is a DESI requirement, it is not a union requirement. Um, relative to the proposal, I mean, I, I, I personally think, um, and, and I know, uh, my colleagues on this call feel the same way, that, uh, the proposal that was made two weeks ago is a substantive one. Uh, it is one that is, uh, rich with support. Uh, it is supported by data. Um, it is time structured, um, we, we, we are mindful of the fact that, uh, the teachers have a lot going on. Uh, we gave what we felt like, uh, was a, um, you know, a, a reasonable amount of time, uh, to, to complete the requirements for a license while also uh, getting the supports, uh, to do so, uh, which we think are, again, uh, reasonable. Um, and, you know, our pre, our proposal is, re- remains the same. Uh, you know, and as I said the last time, and I, I'll say it again, you know, we really feel like this is an equity initiative. Uh, we feel like this is student-facing and student-centered. Uh, and I, I know that not everyone will like every decision that, that, that comes their way. And I, and I respect that and I respect my colleagues in the classroom. Um, but, you know, it's time, uh, for this district, and I can't speak for what other districts are doing. It's time for this district to begin to take substantive steps uh, to, to match that evolution of meeting the needs of our kids and, and, and acknowledging who's in those classrooms. I don't know if, um, Rania or Amanda, uh, would like to add to that.
I think, um, Mr. Castellano had some questions.
I, I had a follow-up, Donna, if, if.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay, um, so, you know, the, a lot of the feedback that, that I got from teachers and, and educators, uh, was before there'd be two people, um, given support to the, to the child. And now it's going to be one person. Uh, in addition to that, um, it's going to take away, uh, from, uh, small groups and, um, more, um, curriculum-based, um, activities that they do with their students. So what input did you get from curriculum? What, um, wh- what is it, what is this going to do to the classroom? Uh, that's also going to impact the student as well. So I want to make sure that w- 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 we, we provide to our students everything that they need, all the tools that they need. Okay, so if, if we're gonna take away things, um, uh, to, to, to meet, um, uh, a requirement that, that we're setting up ourselves, I want to make sure that the kids are still well-rounded in all the other areas. So, um, what other information did you get? What's gonna, what's the day gonna look like if, if this happens? Just so we can get a better understanding.
Ron, you're Amanda, you want to take the, um, small group instruction piece?
Amanda, you want to jump in?
Sure, um, so a couple of things. First, um, the key thing about this model is that it would be providing an explicit block of English learn, language development to all students, Ls, non-Ls, and for our English learners ranging in proficiency from one to four. Um, we know that if we build out a curriculum framework, and we have worked closely with the curriculum department, and it's been informed by our work in dual language, if we build in explicit connections for language learners and create a cohesive structure across the day, we know that our students will gain many more opportunities to engage in language development. And the key piece of that is that when all of our students, including our three, level three and level four students, our higher proficiency English learners, are receiving that really explicit dose of language development um, throughout the day from a licensed ESL teacher, on a compliance side, that frees up our ESL teachers to provide direct service instruction to students who, um, are earlier proficient Ls, um, perhaps are Ls with disabilities who need, uh, maybe a more small, uh, smaller or more intense setting. Um, so we believe that by providing a day that benefits all English learners and non-English learners, um, we can be more targeted with our supports.
Right, and just to add one point to that, it's, uh, in this model, it's not what is happening now plus what we're asking them to do. The day will be different and structured differently with those curricular supports so that the language development is embedded within the entire instructional day. So we're not relying on just our English learners getting support in English language development for forty-five or even ninety minutes. We want it embedded throughout the entire five and a half hour day because that's how we're going to build up those students who are making progress so that fewer students ultimately need as much support as they go up in the grades.
Thank you. Uh, Donna, you're on mute, but I think.
Mr. Castellano, sorry, I apologize, Mr. Castellanos.
Uh, thank you, um, Dr. Tuttwiler and Amanda and Attorney, Attorney Satterwhite and Lorraine. Um, just for, just to clarify questions. Uh, before I start, I just want to kind of just clear the air and just kind of share some stuff with the folks out there. Um, so first of all, uh, this is my mother. I carry this picture everywhere, everywhere I make decisions, anything I ever do, this picture's always with me. Her name's Liliana Leguera Castellanos. She passed away, um, in Venezuela, so I'm Venezuelan. I was born there, I came here when I was three years old and I was living with my mother. My father, my father's a Venezuelan man, so I came here when I was three, Atlanta, in Lynn, Mass. Um, I became a US citizen when I was fourteen years old. Um, it's, I'm very proud of my Latin heritage, my background, my culture. I bring this up because I was, um, this issue brought a lot of attention, as many folks I heard from the community respectively. I'm all about critical dialogue and having conversations, I don't mind. I, I could take that all day. But some of the, the, the statements that was, um, some of the things that were said to me was that I was too white to understand this, this issue. Um, that I don't understand the, the, this as a Latino because of the color of my skin. I s- I was told that you're not Latino enough. Um, and there's all this stuff that, that was said to family members and friends of mine that were pretty hurtful. Uh, so, but just to clearly, I'm very proud of my Latin heritage and why I'm going to just, just openly explain why I am where my stance is. So I just wanted to set the table there. Um, so like I said, so the LYN public school system has been cited for being out of compliance with DESI. I'm going to give some background information just for the general audience of where I stand. So the citation is due to lack of service minutes being provided to EL students. So the, the LPS administration has decided the best way to rectify the issue is to require all kindergarten teachers to carry a dual license in ESL early childhood. The LYN public school plan is to implement the ELD, English Language Development Model. The ELD model will completely remove the ESL teacher from the kindergarten classroom. Please realize, the public has perhaps not realized nor understood this component of the plan that the LPS administration is proposing. Removing the ESL teacher from the kindergarten classroom is not a good idea. And, and I know Attorney Satterwhite did ask the, the clarifying questions about how that would look. But I don't, I, I, I really feel like this is not a good idea for the following reasons. If the ESL teacher is removed completely from the kindergarten classroom, the EL student is no longer receiving tiered instruction. This means that EL student who had once seen the ESL teacher for fifteen minutes each day in small group and was also seen by the classroom teacher for fifteen minutes each day in small group would no longer have that face-to-face opportunity to acquire a language in a small group setting. Due to overcrowding, that issue that we've had, we have classes in sizes of twenty-five and up. So this is going to impact them. Um, and this is the true equity issue. The ELD model is taking away a total of one hour and fifteen minutes weekly of direct instructional services to EL learners. The kindergarten teacher is now the only instructor of the EL student. Therefore, the kindergarten teacher is now doing the job of what was once done by two professionals. In essence, what LPS is proposing is to take away service hours from the EL learner. The power of small group instruction is not to be underestimated. It can be done very successfully when done properly. The small group model is also a, a very developmentally appropriate structure to help EL students with language acquisition. Regardless that the minutes of service are a compliance issue for the, for DESI and still an issue for LPS, the burden should not be placed on the rank-and-file members to solve the problem. There's a larger issue. This requirement is, is, is along, along the EL issue, that we need to bring it to the forefront. We lack space, we've been underfunded from the state for so many years. We lack systematic resources that are bringing folks to come into my world to say that you're not Spanish enough to understand this issue. Well, let me tell you, this is a, this is a very, very important issue and I want the folks out there to understand that there is a concern and we need to meet our EL students' needs. However, the ELD model will not produce this student growth. It will only produce a more challenging structure for EL students to learn in whole group settings. And also, if we could, why not hire more ESL teachers? I've had conversations with so many more professionals in this area than I have in a, in a lot of issues. And there were so many other al- alternatives to just slap them down a Band-Aid with a Band-Aid, uh, solution. We need to think bigger, it's sustainable. This is gonna, this mandate, the planning time, DESI, I give, I called DESI, DESI said the framework, this is not feasible. Two years, with good faith, they didn't agree with it. I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that, and I know Dr. Tuttwiler and you're probably gonna just do what you do and respectfully, I always appreciate you.
Well, you know, I, I'm actually gonna let Rania or Amanda, because I know that, uh, Amanda needs to depart at six-thirty, uh, respond to the, the pieces of, of what you just shared around taking away resources and the model actually resulting in less minutes. I'll ask them to respond to that, but what I will say, uh, uh, Member Castellanos, is that I'm sorry that, uh, you, people spoke to you that way, uh, and said those things. I don't think you deserve that. Uh, the relationship that we have and all of the conversations we have, uh, and what I've seen from you and, uh, my short tenure here as superintendent, uh, has always been about, you know, putting the students first. Uh, I will say respectfully that what you just described, um, is not, i- it's not, it's not accurate. Uh, you know, the, the conclusions drawn from what you just described are not accurate. I say that to you as a friend and colleague, it's just not. Uh, but I'll let Rania and Amanda, um, respond.
Amanda, I'll give you first dibs because I know you have to run.
Yeah, um, so I guess I just want to go back again to the point that I raised with Member Satterwhite. Um, the idea is not to take away the ESL teacher from the classroom entirely. Um, I think instead, a better way to think about it is if you have twenty students, all of whom are identified English learners out of twenty-five, and you're attempting to provide small group instruction to all twenty students, um, in small group, obviously, the amount of time that you have within the small group structure of approximately an hour breaks down to about fifteen minutes per small group. However, if you are using some of the school day or the majority of the school day to provide opportunities for language learners to acquire, um, language structures, um, and an additional explicit whole group ELD time by the classroom teacher, when the ESL specialist comes into the classroom, instead of taking their hour and dividing it by twenty students, some of those students have received enough English language development to be successful. Our students who are level four students, they have been speaking English and perhaps Spanish or another language for the majority of their lives, they're getting enough language development in that whole group ELD model. That allows the ESL specialist to work very, very closely with perhaps level one and two students. And if you say maybe there are ten level one and two EL students, now that teacher has thirty minutes per small group to work with them. If there are maybe five, that teacher might be able to work with them for forty-five minutes to an hour during small group time, whereas before their time may not have been available to them.
Thank you, and I'll just, um, add to that in the discussion around direct ESL instruction. Direct ESL instruction is not small group. Direct ESL instruction is, is explicit instruction in language by a licensed ESL teacher. Um, and, you know, the, the, the idea of adding more staff, right? We, we talked about, number one, we not being able to find the staff. Number two, with the increases we're seeing in the district, the numbers we have now in fourth grade, for example, are representative of the twenty-nine percent EL population we had in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. If you track that sixty-eight percent that is coming in now, over time, we will be exponentially increasing our EL students in the upper grades if our students aren't making more adequate progress, which, which is the core, is the DESI finding. The ESL services is part of that, but the, the, the core of the finding is our Ls are not making adequate progress in language development. So even if in a classroom of twenty, if you have twenty English learners in a classroom, let's say you have more ESL teachers, now you have four teachers in that classroom, they're still only providing twenty minutes of service because that's how the structure of the small group setting happens. So even the addition of ESL staff doesn't increase the time of ESL service in the current structure that exists.
And we'll also add that, um, one of the key things that we thought about was the importance of our English learners being integrated within the kindergarten model. Um, if we were to just simply increase time, um, and provide that through small group services, those students would be missing out on some really valuable classroom time, both in terms of social, um, skills, um, in terms of community building. Um, just pulling our Ls out for ninety minutes, first of all, is not feasible. If you have twenty of them, that's the entire class essentially. Um, and second of all, it's not really necessarily what is most beneficial for them. Yes, they need ninety minutes, forty-five to ninety minutes, but to Rania's point, that can be done in a combination of whole and small group. And that's what's in the best interest of the child, so that they remain an integral and key part of the classroom um, and can pro, receive their ESL services broken up between both small group and whole group, again, allowing them to remain part of the classroom community.
Thank you, and I will also add in terms of tiered instruction, because I know that was mentioned, and ESL is not an intervention. That is clearly stated in the state of Massachusetts in the guidance. It is a required tier-one instructional service that ELs are required. So just like they're required to receive English language arts and mathematics, they are required to receive ESL as a tier-one. It is not an intervention for our students to get English language development. It is part of their required services in our schools.
Thank you, Amanda, I know you have.
Uh, can I respond, please? I, I appreciate, uh, Amanda and Rania for your, your, um, your, your input. Um, some of the, actually, it's interesting, my phone's blowing up, and we have folks telling me rank and file saying that, that you guys are lying, that I have a, so actually I have an instructor saying that they have eleven, that I have eleven level one students who have not been serviced once this year. Um, actually, that I was correct in research, that, that you guys are not sharing the reality and, and, and EL are not supposed to be pulled out of the classroom. My phone's blowing up, so there's a lot of people, and, again, and if we're coming, if we're trying to be transparent in this process, my phone, my emails, it's just, it's, 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 this is a disconnect. There's a disconnect with this whole rollout, there is a disconnect. This is not the best way to roll out and plan, you have a disconnect with your rank and file and the administration. I have a whole stack of emails, texts, phone calls. I got one phone call allegedly by, um, I'm not gonna call the name of, but it was the last minute of the day. My secretary reached out and said someone disappalled it. But I haven't seen, we have to have a connection, we need to collaborate. I don't know, and that's why the timeframe being stuck on two, I, I, I understand where we're at right now, and I, I understand that there's just this, this disconnect, but we have to have common ground. We have to work this issue together. As you mentioned, Rania, we have a growing issue here. But we needed to, again, remove the Band-Aid solutions. We need sustainability. I, 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 I'm saying, I'm seeing it live, like, they're not going to talk to their bosses. You have rank and file folks who are not happy about this. We have families too, it's not just teachers. So let's start to put all the blame on teachers, on the rank, it's, it's, it's really the, the, the rollout here, we need to reconsider how flexible, how we can work together to establish this. But we have to work together. We have, we are coming out of a pandemic. And we have to, we have to, you have to understand that people are still trying to transition to hybrid next week. People are really traumatized. And now it makes it look like we don't care. I, I care, I care, I care. And to be questioned in my attack. And to be questioned in my integrity, but I care. I stay up late. I don't sleep. I fight for my constituents. Latino, command, black, white. Every day, every day. And I always thought, I I always, that this is ridiculous.
Yeah, I I I agree. Um, it is ridiculous, and I think we all care. Uh, I think we all also sometimes will disagree on on certain things. That happens. Um, you know, what I would say is, you know, and I I can't, I don't think I can respond to all of the text messages or emails that you're getting right now. Um, you know, I I also don't like to have my integrity or my colleagues' integrity questioned or impugned. But what I would say is, um, you know, the 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 thought that this is, um, you know, creating a more divisive scenario in the classroom. I I think you heard Amanda's, uh, the description really clearly, that actually goes in the opposite direction towards inclusion in a really meaningful way. The other thing, the other thing I would just say really quickly is, um, I agree that we need to work together, uh, and I, and, you know, understanding that sometimes you won't agree on on everything. Uh, on issues such as these, you know, we feel that this is, uh, deeply rooted in meeting these students' needs, uh, and anchored in uh, core values and what this district says that it's about. Uh, y- you may not have consensus, but that's not a reason to move, to to not move forward. Uh, this is a student-facing, student-centered proposal, um, and we feel it's in their best interest. I think the research would support it. The last thing I would say is, I I I I, after this meeting, we might have to connect, uh, and find out who at Desi says that two years is not enough time, uh, to earn a license. Most master's programs are one year, where you do the entire coursework, student-teaching, and earn a license. We're talking about two years, uh, you know, with support, uh, to to earn that license.
So Dr. Taw, that'd be, that's exactly why I said we need to collaborate, so we gotta clear the air, and we gotta get on the table and not rush things out, so we can clear the rumors, clear the, you, we gotta unbind this system change. We gotta unbind so we can focus on equity and inclusion, so we do not have this type of disconnect. But again, I appreciate Dr. Taw, I I appreciate you, Tom. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for members?
Uh, Tariq Nicholson was next and then Lorraine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jared. I apologize.
No problem at all. Thank you, Member Capola. Um, I just wanna thank Dr. Tawiler and his team for putting together the presentation, um, and the proposal, and I and I also, uh, I wanna echo something Dr. Tawiler said, uh, and and that I'm I'm sorry here, uh, Brian, Member Castellanos, about those personal attacks. We can certainly all disagree about these issues. They're important issues. Um, I and and you certainly have proven, um, and 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 I think we all would agree that you have the the district's best interest, the students' best interests. And and I just wanted to say that I would stand with you on that. Um, I, uh, Dr. Tawiler, I do, I do appreciate the proposal. I think I think this is, this is a key priority for the district. We've established the progress for English learners. We've all agreed that the progress for English learners is a key priority for the district, and, uh, this is a a proposal to to, uh, advance that and direct that, and I I appreciate that. I also wanna, I I I've also heard from many educators, uh, about this and and have gotten some really good questions and good and good feedback. And I wanna thank the educators for that. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that, um, I I'll ask a couple of those questions in a in a minute, um, but I think, you know, there there I, in 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 seeing some of these initiatives rolled out, I s- I feel like sometimes the administration, uh, can, it, there there there's, there's internal, uh, uncertainty about the the appropriate pace of rollout and communication strategy for rollout, which I understand, because there's trade-offs of, um, a sharing, a proposal before it's totally, uh, baked and agreed to, um, and creating fear and uncertainty for no reason, um, and also allowing for input, um, you know, and I think we talked about this last meeting, but I think there 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 were certain, uh, ways in which this has been, uh, communicated and rolled out that that we can learn from as a district. Uh, and 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 I I I I hope we take that to heart. Yeah, and I will say to the, to the educators who are sharing the feedback, I I say that, I I I I I I have that feedback. I share that feedback. I shared it just now, and I also wanna say that Dr. Tawiler, Dr. Tawiler, I think, has earned a reputation in my book that he's very open to feedback. Um, and his team is very open to feedback, and I think, uh, we're we are at our best when we're able to hear each other in giving that feedback, um, and and I would encourage you to, uh, to continue to share that with with the with the L P S team. Um, so what the question that I had that I that I that I would, uh, wanted to raise is, so the one one of the educators had a question about the appropriate metric to evaluate the results, because I think this is a, I think this is a key point, and one that's important to me is that this is about more than just the specific citation. It's about finding a strategy to achieve more progress, to achieve the the E L progress that we, uh, uh, we we know that our students can achieve, and we know that they need to achieve if they're gonna get the education they deserve. Um, and so, w- w- there, I I think there was a a good question about, is i- is the first-grade access test the right metric, um, relative to sort of an earlier access test? Like, how can you isolate the impact of a of a change like this, um, in 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 looking at the data?
Sure. Um, so students take access in kindergarten in January and then take it again in first grade in January. Right? So it does overlap the two school years, but, um, you know, you have the same group of students who are taking the K test and the January test, so it's two consecutive years. So it is a, it is a good data point to see our students and how they're developing, especially in literacy, um, in in that initial year of schooling. Um, but also, we've also added English language development on our report cards this year, um, as, again, to be more transparent to our families and communicate student progress. Um, that data point is also a useful indicator, because, uh, teachers are monitoring that progression of language development on each report card. So being able to see how students are making progress in the language over the course of the year is is really helpful in terms of collecting data of our of our students' progress as well.
Okay.
Um, I will also add that we have baseline data for every kindergarten student. As they enter the Lynn Public Schools, they're administered what's called the WEDA model. Um, it is almost identical to the WEDA access test. Um, they're all provided for any state or Commonwealth that is a WEDA state, of which Massachusetts is one. Um, it's very similar to it, except obviously the the content itself is different, so it's not exactly the same, but it's the same format. Um, and so therefore, by the time a student hits first grade, we have their intake testing, um, which again is is a standardized and normed assessment from anywhere between March and, you know, the school year thatself from the year before. Um, we also have kindergarten access testing, followed immediately by the next January kindergarten, uh, first-grade access testing. So we actually do, by the time they hit first grade, have three data points for every child, assuming they've been in the school district for, um, for those three years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. And then the other point. Yeah, the 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 other, the other, uh, question about that from 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 the teachers was, I think, and you you know, you've you've spoken to this, uh, before about the ESL coaches, but I I think it, there's probably, there there's maybe a broader point. There's a, there's a, I think, an interest in, um, from teachers who 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 also want to be, uh, seeing their students accelerate their growth, um, about, uh, make, having, having the support that they need, um, from from the rest of their teams. So other, uh, other, uh, the the enough access to E L coach, ESL coaches, enough, like, enough training and professional development for the paraprofessionals so that the the this can be, you know, this can be a team approach.
Um, just to speak to the ESL coaches, currently, we have three ESL coaches at the elementary level, right? Um, they are funded through Title III, which is to support, um, educators in in providing services to English learners. Um, you know, we talk a lot, our E L coaches provide a lot of support in terms of professional development and targeted support at buildings. Um, there is not, what we always say is we wanna build capacity within our schools to support educators in the education of our Ls. We will never have enough E L coaches in the district to even have one at each building. You're, you were going from three to eighteen, just to have one in each building. Um, so we really work hard to build capacity with principals, with administrators, with educators, department heads at the secondary level, so that everybody has this shared ownership of the success of our English learners and not just the E L E department and the staff that lives within the E L E department. Because that's how we're gonna see the success of our kids, is when everybody has a shared ownership of what good ESL instruction looks like, what good S E I instruction looks like. And we've been working really hard with professional development in this district around that. I taught psyop in this district almost twenty years ago, right? We have been at the forefront of what, you know, good practice looks like for English learners, but to be honest, we're still all learning of what that looks like for our students, for them to be successful.
Okay, thank you. I mean, you know, I I I appreciate that. I appreciate the answers. Like I said, I appreciate the proposal. I I I thank, again, the educators for for reaching out and the really thoughtful feedback, and I I I know they want their work and figure out what's best for their students. I also, you know, thinking of of shared ownership, I I I also would like to thank the the feedback we've gotten from the community, um, and and people who are also caring about this issue and leading on this issue and working on this issue. I think, I think that that's right, Ms. Caldwell. This is, this requires shared ownership and, um, and it it's something we all care about, and 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 I, you know, like like I said in the beginning, I think, uh, the the it's possible to disagree on on the substance without the personal attack, and I wanna sh- uh, share my, again, support for for Member Castellanos on that.
Okay, is there anybody else that had a question?
Lorraine had her hand, and the mayor did.
Lorraine, okay, Lorraine, Ms. Gately.
I was just gonna make a motion.
I I'd like, I'd like to, uh, get a chance to speak before there's a motion.
I apologize, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Uh, Lorraine had her hand up for us, but I'd like to get a chance to speak. Thank you. Thank you. First, um, you know, in in elective office or in, when you're involved in making decisions that impact, uh, groups of people one way or the other, there's always strong and passionate feelings about what the right direction to go is. Um, and I've been doing this for a long time, and I've had strong and passionate disagreements uh, in the legislature. I've had strong and passionate disagreements, um, as mayor. Uh, there is no place for personal tax on anyone. Uh, when we talk about issues of importance that we we take seriously as elected members of whatever body we are elected to. Uh, we make tough decisions that aren't always, um, popular, but it's about something that someone believes in. And, you know, we can always agree strongly to disagree, but to never take it, uh, to the personal level. So uh, in terms of, um, what is impacted, Member Castellanos, uh, is there is no place for personal tax on someone who is taking a position on what they believe in. You can strongly advocate your position, but in terms of taking someone on in a personal way, uh, is is again unacceptable in this community, and, uh, I said it yesterday, and I, and I, so I asked questions about, um, my decision, uh, for, uh, not running for reelection. Uh, the, and when the question was asked, what do I see that is a challenge in today's world? It's the divisiveness in the local, state, and federal level on the interchange of ideas and the passionate feelings about a direction to go to cha- make changes that impact in a good way, everyone that were, um, at the table or at whatever position we're in, whether it's elected and unelected. So, uh, I wanna make clear that there is no, there is no place in this community for attacks in a personal manner on positions of conscience of elected officials or people that are working hard to make these decisions. With with that being said, I just wanna make my position clear as well on what we've talked about, uh, because I have listened to this discussion. I think there's been a strong case made from the superintendent and from Rania and Am- Amanda to go in a different direction than we're going now, uh, and I think they've made a very strong case. Uh, and I think in a fair way, to try and move a proposal forward that they believe is the right direction for the schools to move forward on. There's been a lot of discussions on both sides of this issue, and again, that discussion will continue. Uh, but I I think they have made a strong for case from my, from my perspective to make the change that is proposed, and I I just wanna reiterate that I do support of the superintendent's proposal with, uh, the work that's going on in the in the school department. Again, this, there's disagreement on this committee, there's disagreement in the community, uh, which is part of an honest and open discussion about issues that impact the people that we represent. Uh, that's a fair discussion to have, and we can definitely strongly disagree on, uh, each person's, uh, decision on what they do. But we all make that decision based on what we bring to the table, the facts that we're we're we are able to listen to, and the decisions we make are based on what we think is best for, uh, moving forward on this issue and other issues. So I just wanna reiterate what my position is, but I also wanna make clear that, uh, these strongly held positions and passionate discussions we're having reflect a position of people that have looked at the issues and determined, uh, where they are on this, on this decision. And I just wanted to make clear what my decision was. So, um, again, I, thanks for this ongoing discussion. And I know that everyone that I've worked with over the last three-plus years, uh, works this job in a way that uh, they're here for for the right reasons to do the right thing, and, uh, and that's what this discussion's about tonight. Uh, and, uh, and hopefully, we'll continue to have those strong, passionate, and pointed discussions and try and find the best way to move our community forward and make sure the students have the best opportunity to to success. That's our goal. That's everyone's goal that's on this call. Uh, and, uh, we'll continue to work that, uh, in that direction, uh, because that's what we're here to do. So, thank you, Member Capola.
And and, Donna, I just have a follow-up before we go on the vote. Donna? Okay.
Okay, apologize. Okay, Brian, I mean, Michael.
Okay. Uh, so, um, Patrick, when when I got, uh, sorry, Dr. Tawiler, when I got on the school committee, um, uh, ye- years ago, one of the initiatives that we, um, we're talking about was every student, every day. Do you remember that? Where we focused, where we we made it a promise to focus on every student, to make sure that they were gonna be in school and be equipped in school, to be provided the tools, a- and so on, okay? This falls squarely into that. We 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 need to educate and make sure that every student, every day, uh, will will be provided the tools and 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 whatnot, that they need to succeed. I understand, um, where, um, uh, we also voted on the core values of the district. I understand that we're trying to make it a more equitable district, and that's extremely important. Um, I I think that the issue that we're all facing, if you read, um, a lot of the feedback from, uh, the educators, is trust. Um, you know, just a history of 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 things in this district, and, you know, we can't continue to fall back on that. Now, we have, uh, uh, you know, a a a new, um, uh, new leadership with you, Dr. Tawiler. Uh, we have a new school committee with with regards to the people that are on here. Um, we've, we've, we've listened, um, and 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 helped make the district better over the past at least the four years that I've been on and since you've been superintendent. What whatever decision that we make, if it's if it's moving forward and adjusting the timeframe, um, I I think that we need to be sure that, um, we're not gonna be setting any sort of precedent where, um, there's gonna be, uh, drastic drastic changes like this throughout the the, uh, district with regards to grade levels outside of kindergarten. Um, so, you know, I I it it's, the the majority of the information and letters that I'm getting, you know, the teachers are 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 definitely adamant uh, uh, against that this is needed because it's not a requirement. Um, but, you know, to- towards the end, if 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 it is voted on, what they want is 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 additional time, because they know how 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 much time they need, um, and and we're getting a lot of feedback with people that are are near, uh, retirement that are asking to be grandfathered in. So, um, I I I see the need. I know that we we need to make the change. Um, uh, Member Castellanos, uh, you know, uh, referenced towards the end of his his, um, statement that, uh, you know, we we need to 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 take a step back and come back and 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 be more equitable with regards to uh, expectations of of our educators and and the timeframe, uh, but I think that we've been speaking about this over the last two meetings. Uh, but I think that we've been speaking about this over the last two meetings. So, um, it, it, you know, I, I'd like to, to, to discuss, you know, where we can work on, on that aspect. Cause it, it, this is, this is something that we do need to address, and I can say it over and over again. Um, but I, I know the last meeting you said that, uh, you were, you were set and, and you weren't gonna uh, uh, change the, the proposal or your stance. But I, I, I think that, um, uh, I, I, I think the district needs to hear that, that there's some flexibility, uh, there. And I know that, um, Ms. Caldwell saw that there needs to be an honest effort. But, uh, that, that's more of a, a, an objective, uh, stance. Uh, you know, we need to to have something, I, I think, more, more set in stone with regards to a timeframe. Uh, Donna, uh, both Ms. Caldwell and Dr. Tuttwiler have their hands up.
You can go first.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just gonna speak to, um, just a couple of things I was thinking about. In terms of the timeline, our department specifically has a lot of experience guiding teachers through the ESL licensure, right? Because our ESL teachers are ESL licensed. And because of the, the shortage in terms of finding ESL staff, we often have many unlicensed teachers who enter our school district when we hire them. And we guide them through, um, you know, the process to earn that licensure. And most, uh, almost all of the time, our teachers have earned that license within the one school year that they have been waived in the district. And those are often new teachers, um, who may have come from other school districts or have other licenses who have to do the internship and pass CMTL, similar to the expectations here. Um, and many of them are new teachers. So they're doing new teacher induction, many of them are in master's programs. And that is without some of the additional supports that we're offering in this initiative, such as the coursework um, and that explicit kind of coaching support during the internship process. Um, we have successfully guided, um, this, just this year, ten out of twelve teachers have already passed that ESL. Um, you know, have gone through that ESL MTEL process, um, because that's the staff we have. So we're familiar with guiding people through that process. Um, I also want to talk about the, the idea of sustainability because it really, you know, we talk about a Band-Aid, and for me, this is not a Band-Aid. This is the sustainability structure. Because we've been doing the Band-Aid, right? We've been adding staff and not really increasing services. I mean, just six years ago, most of our elementary school students weren't receiving any ESL services, right? Based on our DESI compliance. And many of them were in separate programs and segregated in many cases. And that's not what we want to do. We want our Ls to be part of our school communities and part of our classrooms and to have that shared ownership where we can really develop that language and literacy in that kindergarten year where it's, where it's so, um, you know, the connections that we can make between language and that curriculum in kindergarten are so, um, intricately connected that it will make such a huge impact on kids.
Thank you.
Donna, I'm raising my hand, so I know you can't hear me. So, so Ronnie, thank you.
Hey, Dr. Tuttwiler, I had, what was I gonna say?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Yes, Ms., okay.
Sorry, Donna. Uh, Ronnie, thank you so much for that point. So I just want to, so, so, why can't we start off, you know, we're, we're pushing the mandate. Why not allow the volunteer option in the future and the proposal? So if we got folks, like you said, Rania, who, who you, you clearly have success with folks who are obtaining licensure, why not loosen up? And that's why, this isn't the proper space. This isn't, we already heard the proposal, but there's ways to to, to, when we look in the, the rollout and implementation with your, your rank and file, there's folks that would be interested in that. And then there would be folks who wouldn't. The more seasoned five, ten, the twenty-year vets would be more than likely to support the ecosystem within a staff infrastructure. Why are we so stuck on the mandate to make it in two? Like, I think we gotta, that's why I think it's, again, I, I just feel, just hearing you talk, I said, people, I bet there would be some staff who would like to volunteer to do that and to give opportunities. And that's why I think Member Gately mentioned the pilot program. Why not slow, steady? And, and that's, when we say slow, we have urgency too. We have a growing, we are very aware of the growing issue in this city. We are very aware, every student, every day, we are fighting for students every single day. We are aware. But it takes a village. It takes leadership. It takes people to really understand and come together. It's not blame one another. It's work together. So when you're saying that, Ronnie, I would love to hear, I bet there's staff that would love to do that. I bet this, I bet there's folks that would love that. It's just a whole rollout. And I understand, Dr. Tuttwiler, I know, I know you guys put a lot of work into this, and I, and heard from the mayor, heard folks. I think we just gotta get back to the table. We have to. So there's a disconnect with the rank and file, and I'll call how I see it in my, in my mailbox, in my emails and the letters. So.
Dr. Tuttwiler.
Thank you. Uh, what I would just say quickly is, um, you know, when there's nowhere else, um, you know, in any other classroom, in any other content area or discipline, um, in this school district or in this state, do we say, if you want to, you can do it, right? You know, around license, right? Nowhere else do we say that. Uh, and I would say, you know, to say, you know, those who want to can, and the others, you know, it's, it, you know, don't have to. Uh, you know, again, I, I, I would go back to, so that's not a system change, right? That's not even a change. That, that, that is, I, I don't even know what to call that. Uh, but that, that is not, that is not going to, to, to effectuate the kind of change that we seek around language acquisition. It's just not gonna do that. Um, and, you know, where there are issues or, or, um, you know, disagreements around whether, you know, and I, I will own completely the, the rollout in terms of, um, how people were communicated to and the win. I own that one hundred percent, and I apologize directly to, uh, the kindergarten teachers at our meeting. Um, but moving beyond that, right, and focusing on the issue, when there's a, when there's that sort of, uh, disagreement and there's different camps, I think the place that both camps need to report back to is the values, right? Like, that's, that's where this is emanating from, right? Uh, when we talk about inclusion, we talk about equity, and we talk about, you know, elevating groups of students who have been marginalized in this district for a long time, right? Ronnie, you just laid out the last six years ago on that, um, you know, on, on that, uh, report from DESI. I mean, you had kids getting zero minutes of ESL instruction against the law, right? They're, they're supposed to be getting that. Uh, you know, but when you have those sorts of differences, you retreat back to the core values. And I think ours are pretty clear. I appreciate, I believe it was, uh, Member Sadoway who talked about, uh, maybe Member, uh, Nicholson who talked about the establishment of core values. That was intentional. Uh, in my first year in our development of the strategic plan. Plan, great, yes, let's have a plan with objectives. But for me, the most important thing was to have a set of values that we say, that we agree upon as a, as a community, as a district, as educators, as people who care about kids, that this is what we believe, and this is what we're gonna act upon. No matter how messy things get, we're gonna go back to these five things. One of them is inclusiveness. Uh, and, and I feel that, uh, this, this proposal is emanating from that core value.
It, it just, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler. And, and I actually, you know, I had the honor and opportunity to join in the district-wide strategic planning process. Um, it was wonderful to see the, the, the community collaboration, the stakeholder involvement. There were a lot of voices at the table, and I remember some of those exercises that we would do in hopes, when we did the vision planning, I was part of the whole process, which, very grateful, and there's a lot of gratitude there. And one of the pieces that we, we've always, I've always heard the theme during our planning was transparency. And having transparency is vital when making this type of system change. I, and I, and I, you, I understand your point. I just feel like we are still coming out of a pandemic, there's things that we need to do to stabilize. We're still transitioning to high, there's a lot of moving parts to this. We gotta slow it down. We have to slow it down. And, and I would really, I would appreciate, you know, we, we taking a look at this in deeper, you know, with, with staff, and I know you had a meeting on Monday, but there needs, there's more, I can hear, so I hear the need, as a, as a, as a, as an elected official, we get to hear the, the, the feelings of what goes on with, with, with leadership. So we get to hear it. And we try to be the vehicle to help communicate it with leadership to say, hey, this is how everyone's feeling. And trust, like, Member Sadoway said, trust. When you read the emails, it's like, you know, one, two, okay. When you get three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, it's a pattern. Now, we're just trying to address it, and we need to come together. And I just, I just.
Now, Member Castellanos, and I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but what happens when there is not consensus? What happens? We, we come together and we just, we, we, we stay on opposite sides of, of the camp. Then what?
I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be like that. I think I have, I have more faith in you, Dr. Tuttwiler, than I do.
No, no. This isn't about faith in, in me. I, I, we, you know, we've communicated this, we, we've explained why, and there are people who disagree. And that's gonna happen in life, and they may not come over. So then we need to retreat back to what we believe in and do what's best for kids. That's what it's about for me. So really, I think, you know, just to be clear, the ball is in the personnel subcommittee's court, and then also in the committee of the whole's court to make a decision. I, we've put, we've explained, um, you know, I think really clearly and substantively, why and how. Now it's up to you.
Donna, I'd like to make my motion. Step to seven.
Yes, make a motion, please.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion not to make the certification in EL part of the qualification to serve as kindergarten teacher in Lynn Public Schools. Mary, I sent you a high copy.
Okay, I'll second that. Um, can I just ask Attorney Mahos, um, a yes means that you, we, we do not agree on the, um,
A yes means that there will not be a qualification for the, uh, position of kindergarten teacher.
Okay, okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, move it to the committee on the whole.
Okay, exactly. Do we need another roll call for that?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, second. Then, uh, roll call for, to move it to the full committee.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes. What, what was the? Is it the same motion?
Just to move it to the full committee.
Okay, yes.
Now, we'll do a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please, Deb.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're at seven oh five. Uh, meeting was scheduled to begin at seven. I know the subcommittee meeting went on, uh, lengthy discussion. Um, be prepared at this point to go into the full, um, meeting of the sixth regular meeting of the school committee, of the Lynn School Committee. Uh, so, uh, again, as a preliminary matter, we will confirm attendance. Uh, again, Thursday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the sixth regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee. Uh, so can, we can confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda that are present. Uh, and Deb, would you?
Can you see us now?
Mr. Castellanos?
Oh, all right.
Present.
Ms. Capola?
Present.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to go.
Mary? Mr. Ford?
Present.
Ms. Gately? Ms. Gately?
She'll be right back. She'll be right back.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Sadoway?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
And for the record, also present, Superintendent Dr. Tuttwiler, Deputy Superintendent Powers, Deputy Superintendent Rugero, Business Manager McHugh, Secretary of the School Committee, Mary Jewels, and Attorney John Myers.
And, uh, we will wait one minute before I get into, getting into the full meeting as Member Gately, I think, is waiting on Member Gately. So we wait one, uh, one or two minutes to make sure she's, uh, ready to join us. Yep, Member Gately is here. Um, thank you. Again, it's Mayor Tom McGee. Uh, and I'd like to say good evening and thank you for joining us. This open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The auto, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lynn School Department is convening by telephone conference via conference, uh, video conference via the Zoom platform, as posted on the city's website and on the Lynn Public Schools website. Additionally, this meeting can be seen, uh, and viewed on the local cable channels, Channel Three for Comcast and Channel thirty-seven for Verizon. Note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Uh, accordingly, be aware that other people may be able to see you, and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Uh, before we, uh, head to the first item on the agenda, I want to, uh, set the ground rules uh, for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chair, as the chairman, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called, and as you've seen in the subcommittee meetings and meetings past, if the chair does, uh, miss, uh, someone raising their hand, uh, members may speak up and, uh, uh, indicate that they would like to speak, and that will be just as appropriate, um, if, if you have not been recognized. Uh, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Uh, remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Uh, for any response, wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking unless you've been identified by the chair. If, um, if any member wishes to engage with discussion with other, other members, do so through the chair, uh, and again, identifying yourself. And finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. With that, we're ready to, uh, go into the full meeting, and we would like to, I would like to start with a salute to the flag and then stay standing as we would like to, uh, recognize a moment of silence. So please join me in a salute to the flag of the United States of America. And I know that it's in the room there with, uh, Don, Don Hussy is, uh, uh, um, Zoom meeting, um, room on the me, on the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Robert Melanson, a former teacher and coach who passed away on March eleventh of twenty twenty-one. Please join all of us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Um, and just, uh, uh, Mike Bertino may be trying to just, uh, join in on the meeting just to be available if there is a need for him during the discussion. So, uh, if you see him, uh, available, yep. I see he's, he's, uh, up and, uh, running. So thank you. Uh, everyone has the agenda. So first on the agenda, um, is, uh, actually under new business. Uh, the first, um, is for Camp Rotary, a proposal. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, glad to. Uh, this is one of those, uh, annual events, uh, that, that I am thrilled to uh, get going again. Uh, this, this, uh, presentation at the school committee, uh, with us this evening is, uh, Dr. Rich Cowdell, uh, here to talk about, uh, uh, here to talk about, uh, Camp Rotary, uh, who, as we know, has historically funded uh, students going for, uh, summer camp. Uh, I see a big number in the agenda and I'm, I'm eager to hear from, uh, Dr. Cowdell, uh, what, what, uh, what he proposes.
Dr. Cowdell, good to see you. Welcome. You need to unmute.
You think, you think by now I would be okay in unmuting. Uh, I, I just wanted to say hi to everybody. First of all, it's great to see your smiling faces with no masks on, uh, which is, which is great. Um, we are, we are really happy. This is our one hundredth season at Camp Rotary. So for a hundred years, uh, the Lynn Rotary Club, a hundred years ago, the Lynn Rotary Club had the foresight to purchase some property up in Boxford and with the explicit purpose of sending kids from Lynn up for a summer camp, uh, summer camp season. And they've been doing it all the time, year after year. So I'm really excited that we're able to do it again. Just a, a little background on this past year, I came, as you recall, I came before you about a year ago with a similar proposal saying we're excited to be able to bring, uh, fifty kids up to camp and we were, we were really excited. And then somewhere around March, all of a sudden our excitement started to wane a little bit because we were taking a look at what was going on in the world and by somewhere, uh, right, right around April or May, we decided there was no way that we could do it. So we notified all the principals at that point and said, unfortunately, we're going to have to back out of our offer to, uh, to allow you to pick somebody to come to camp. Um, we, we kind of, uh, have also lived through a little bit more of a difficult time because of the fact that our camp had been doing so well, year after year after year, that in two thousand nineteen, at the end of our two thousand nineteen season, uh, the board of directors made the decision to invest in the future and took a mortgage out to build a brand new dining hall. Uh, it replaced our dining hall that was there since nineteen twenty one when the camp opened. So we did not see any problems whatsoever with, with, uh, that type of an investment, saying we, we sell out pretty much every summer, generate enough revenue that we are being fiscally wise to go ahead and build this for the future. It's an investment for the future. So we took out a mortgage and built a three point six million dollar building that is beautiful. It overlooks the pond. It's got a deck on the back. There's a patio with a fireplace on one end of it, shiny new floors, every modern appliance you could think of in the kitchen. It's just beautiful. It's, uh, it's, it's, it matches like a, uh, some type of a dance hall that you would go rent out or something like that. It is gonna be great, but what happened is that we did not anticipate COVID nineteen shutting us down for a year. So all of a sudden, as you can imagine, our, our anticipation of how we were going to pay for it and what was gonna happen became a real threat to our, even our existence. And I did not want to be the director that was there when camp decided that it couldn't continue to go on. We were really lucky because we appealed to our, our parents and said, we can't, we, we're not going to make it at this point if we don't have your help. So thankfully, it was, it was amazing, but parents came out of the woodwork to, to make donations, to keep the camp going. And that combined with our PPP loans that we were able to get made us, and our savings that we had, made us, uh, able to keep going and get through. Um, and then recently, about a month and a half, two months ago, we said, what are we doing though with the Link Kids to Camp program? Because we said, do, do we have enough money to fund it? Can we do it again? And we, our board of directors basically just said, one way or another, we are gonna fund it if they're going to come. So I called up Dr. Tutwiler, I, I texted Dr. Tutwiler and said, uh, we, we're willing to do this if you are interested in accepting it. I knew the situation because I have a close relation that works in the city of Lynn. I knew the situation uh, that was happening with, with the Lynn kids being remote all of the time. And I said, uh, they may say that they don't want to do it, but Dr. Tutwiler's response was just overwhelmingly in favor of saying this, this is actually something that we need at this point. And I totally agree with them, uh, not just the kids in Lynn, but all of the kids need an outlet after what they've been through. The trauma that all of the, the kids have been dealing with, uh, just by not being able to socialize, not being able to get into, to school and see their friends. Uh, we, we just know that we're going, we serve a really important purpose all of the time, but we really feel like this year, we're serving more of an important purpose than ever. So we're just really excited to be able to, to open again and even more excited to be able to offer uh, the same amount. We, we are planning to offer fifty four, uh, campers, the chance, students a chance to come to camp this summer. Uh, and that'll mean that we're going to offer, um, pretty much two to every school, which is an increase from before. Um, and we, we normally alternate gender, like one year we'll give, we'll give boys, the next year, girls. But this year I planned to leave it as it was last year and not alternate. And the reason being that there were a few principals who had already offered the spot to a boy or a girl. So we wanted to allow that principal to go back to that student that didn't get the chance last year and be able to offer the same student the chance to come this year because he or she missed out on it last year. So, uh, in a nutshell, we would like to present the, uh, these, the camperships that I've mentioned and would appreciate it if you will be able to accept them.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Cowdell. And I think you laid out clearly the case of, for the challenges we faced over this year and how important this is. Um, it's nice to hear President Biden say today that the goal now for the first hundred days is two hundred million vaccinations. And they're going, they were on, on a goal, not a hundred million, but two hundred million. And looking at the timeline on this, it looks like the timing is right in so many ways. So just wanted to make that and thank you for the presentation. I see member Gately is, uh, um, member Gately, you're on mute.
Yes, uh, Dr. Cowdell, you know that Camp Rotary was my son Michael's best years of his life. And I just wanted to tell you two, Michael and Jared, this is the camp your sons should go to and daughters should go to to spend a week and they will be ta- well taken care of and they will have the time of their life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do for our community, Dr. T- Dr. Cowdell.
So there's a proposal. Is there a motion on the table to accept? Member Sadoway?
Motion to accept, uh, Camp Rotary's proposal to fund fifty four Lynn students to Camp Rotary for one week of summer camp. The Lynn Kids Camp.
Second.
There's numerous seconds, uh, requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes. Again, great to see you, Dr. Cowdell. Thank you so much for, uh, your presentation and your strong work to, uh, to make sure that this year is happening. All the hard work that built, uh, the new facility up there and uh, exciting to see hopefully this year, uh, back to where you should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next on the agenda, uh, Dr. Tutwiler is another, uh, request for a scholarship from the McGinnis family, from, uh, the, uh, Dr. James Leo McGinnis Memorial Scholarship Fund. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, just, uh, an, an annual event, uh, mayor, uh, deeply, um, deeply, uh, grateful for, uh, this support for our, um, our soon to be graduates. So I'd ask for the committee's, uh, support.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Uh, motion to accept by member Ford, seconded by member Gately. Requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Cabala? Ms. Cabala? I'll get back to her. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Don, are you on mute?
Yes. Sorry about that, Jim.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Uh, next on the agenda is, um, the Lynn Teachers Union, uh, proposal. Dr. Tutwiler, do you want to expl- uh, uh, speak to that for the committee?
Certainly. Certainly, uh, similar, similar, uh, tradition, mayor, as the previous agenda item, looking for the committee's support, um, to accept an, an annual uh, scholarship, uh, and award presented by the Lynn Teachers Union. Uh, you know, again, uh, look, looking forward to supporting our, uh, soon to be graduates. And this also includes, uh, an eighth grade book award, if I'm not mistaken.
Great. Thank you. Uh, looking for a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Uh, member Sadoway, motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Gately. A roll call required, please.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Cabala?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I know I brought it up at the subcommittee meeting, but Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to, uh, speak to, uh, uh, the HVAC, uh, project funding, uh, as, as we had spoken, uh, at least that I brought up at the subcommittee meeting, but is appropriately on the agenda for the full committee.
Yeah, not, not a ton to add here, mayor, uh, just again, by way of reminder, uh, the committee voted in support of seeking a waiver from DESI. Believe that was in the month of November. Um, and after we had the, uh, final estimated costs, submitted that waiver to DESI. But by that point, uh, as they, uh, said to us in no uncertain terms, the landscape has changed in terms of, uh, ESER two and now, uh, ESER three forthcoming. Uh, and so the directive from, uh, from the, uh, uh, Associate Commissioner Finance was to, to use those funds, uh, to support that project. My understanding is that the, uh, project costs in total, uh, about five point five million dollars. Uh, and so we'd be looking for, as the, uh, ESER, uh, ESER grants require, be looking for schools, school committee's support, uh, to use those funds to complete that project.
Thank you, Dr. Tutwiler. And, um, that, the vote that needs to be taken tonight so that we would be able to, um, meet the deadline of, uh, uh, applying for those ESER two funds by March thirty first, uh, a vote of this will allow us to move that forward. Uh, and that, uh, will be eligible to start using that money immediately. Uh, the, the dollar I know is five point five million. I think we actually had at a prior meeting indicated that we were gonna, uh, additionally have funds available in case for, uh, an overrun, which I think, uh, and I know Mike Bertino's on this. We had a little bit of a discussion. I don't know if Kevin or Michael want to jump into that, but I think it was potentially up to six or six and a half million, uh, total to get that done. I don't know if that's, uh, Mike Bertino, you want to speak to that? Just want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves on, on what we can and can't do.
Uh, excuse me, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. We, we thought, um, six point, six point three would do it. And, you know, obviously whatever wasn't spent would, um, would revert back to be re-appropriated for the purpose. But when you do these things, there's generally things, um, unknown things can come up.
And, and I think, and if I'm, uh, I don't know, John or Mike or Kevin, I, I think by approving this by March thirty first, we, you know, there was eighteen million dollars available. We're definitely not planning on spending that. We have clear numbers to what the project would cost. I think that would allow us to fund the project with the ESER funds that are coming from the federal government to make sure the project gets completed, um, between five point five and six point three. So, um, uh, I don't, I don't know that there's any, that that, so I, I think that's my understanding, but a, a proposals on, uh, so I'm looking for a motion to, um, um, ask Kevin McHugh and the, uh, the administration to apply for the ESER two funding by March thirty first, uh, to allow for funding for the projects that we've been talking about for a number of months. And we can, those would be the projects on the ten schools to, uh, to do the HVAC, um, investment in those schools. Member Sadoway?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, th- this is the, um, the work that we originally, um, brought forward to City Hall and they tabled that million. Is it the same work?
No, it's, it's, um, it's the money that we've been talking about that we had, we had actually voted a waiver for. Uh, we, we, as a committee, had voted to ask for a waiver so that the savings we were having because of, uh, I think, uh, Kevin, you can speak a little bit to some of the savings if, if it'd be helpful. So savings that we were seeing because we weren't in person, that we would able to take those dollars and, and we would be able to spend money above the cap. Uh, that typically limits us on net school spending to then use that money to fill, to, uh, to support these projects. And these, um, you know, um, DESI has basically said that they, uh, do not want us to use the waiver, but that the ESER funds are appropriate for that. And if you look at the indication for what those funds are for through the, uh, nine hundred and eight billion dollars approved in December, you know, specifically talks about HVAC and ventilation systems where it's more than appropriate. So the funds are appropriately be spent on that and the money's coming from the federal government. So that is a separate issue from, I think, what you're talking about.
And, um, obviously the work that needs to be done with kids going back into schools, I'm assuming it's gonna be delayed?
No, there's an indicate, we've talked about this and Mike Donovan has indicated that that work, you know, there'll be, uh, you know, there'll be work going on in the buildings and, uh, um, I don't know, Dr. Tutwiler, we talked about this a little bit, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah.
There will be some, there will be some a little, a bit of a, uh, disruption, but I think that is anticipated uh, as that work goes on because it's isolated in certain sections of the building, but it still would be a bit of a disruption. Dr. Tutwiler, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've been wo- working pretty closely with, uh, ISD and, and regular contacts. Um, I mean, I think that the, the updated perception is that it would be a little more, uh, disruptive than initially thought. Uh, and, you know, I, clear communication from me to them is that it can't, it can't. It's as simple as that. It ju- it can't. Uh, and so they're gonna have to work around, uh, the school day. That doesn't mean that there can't be things that they're doing, but it cannot interrupt or disrupt instruction, cannot disrupt, uh, the flow during the day. It just can't. So.
And, and we'll work, and you'll, you'll work closely with them to determine that. Uh, and we anticipate that this work will be completed, uh, by September, which means, you know, there'll be some disruption here, but the, the work, and, and that's why I think it's important that we get the approval here, get it going and start the work right away so that by September, those ten schools will have, uh, new ventilation systems, which, um, again, is decades in the making and I think is a big step forward, which we all, I think, agree on. So, uh, it's a good opportunity.
And, um, obviously, uh, Dr. Teller, when we, we took, uh, we, um, went to a bunch of the schools a couple of years ago, um, we were talking about, um, uh, the equity component of, of, um, uh, net school spending and the, the state funding schools and whatnot. Um, we saw that some teachers had classrooms and closets and, and, and unique areas of the school building. Um, my assumption is that, um, it's gonna also interrupt, or erupt certain spaces where, where teachers or educators work. What are we gonna do, uh, to, um, provide them a safe, uh, space to, to, to work? Yeah, that, that's part of the close partnership, uh, with ISD is, is just ensuring that, uh, whatever work is being done is not disrupting what's happening in the classroom. Uh, I would say pre-pandemic, uh, conditions in terms of, uh, you know, classrooms and things of that nature, um, right now are, are by and large the same. Uh, you know, so I, I wouldn't make a promise that, uh, you know, coming out of this and the students return, they're going to see a, you know, a vastly improved, uh, scenario in some of our older schools. But when you have schools that are, you know, uh, uh, one hundred plus years old, um, you know, we, we do our level best in working with ISD to ensure that those spaces are safe, uh, at, at the bare minimum. So we'll continue to work closely with them, um, and, and again, ensure, uh, that it's not disruptive, but, um, you know, in terms of like new spaces. Uh, with the exception of, um, English High School and the, uh, uh, the modular classrooms that are being put on the, uh, on the side, uh, the, the, the spaces are the same in the buildings.
And just a one follow up and then member Ford will go to you. I think the, um, there is air purifiers in all of these buildings, um, that, that has been, we made that investment early on. I think the one, right, Dr. Tutwiler?
That's correct.
And the one positive with the weather changing and the weather being warmer is that with both the air purifiers and an ability to open windows that the, um, you know, it's not midwinter where it's five degrees out. So we are in a, uh, I think there's a number of positives as we start to take these projects and move them forward. Member Ford?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about the, uh, the air purifiers because my only concern would be that. would be that, you know, disrupting and doing repairs in a hundred year old building, would that affect the air quality of the, of, you know, when the students and the teachers been in the building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, what I can tell you is that, uh, you know, as you know, we commissioned air quality and flow, and airflow tests uh in all of the schools and um, you know, have had meetings with uh both the Linn Teachers Union and the Linn Administrators Union with the engineers from, who, who performed both of those assessments. Um, I think, you know, as it relates to, you know, the work happening presently uh in buildings and whether or not that, that, that creates a difference, I'm gonna wanna work with ISD on that. And that's really part of the rationale why, you know, we wanna make sure that it's at least not happening in a way that's disruptive during the school day.
Okay, I know we already met the air quality standards, I was just wondering what the additional work being done?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I hear you.
Okay.
Other questions from the members? Again, I'm looking for a motion to uh, to move this forward, to uh get the application in or apply for the ESER funds, uh, is there a motion?
Right.
Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I'd like to put forward a motion to authorize the administration to apply for ESER funds to make the uh needed HVAC improvements.
Second.
Second, roll call is required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gaetley?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is an update on transition to in-person learning and the middle school waiver request. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to uh, um, work us through that, please?
Would. Let me two seconds here. Kim, how am I doing here?
Perfect.
Thank you. Uh, so, so just quickly, I wanted to take a little bit of uh time this evening to update you on where we stand with the expansion of in-person learning. Uh, much of what you will see uh is, has already been shared with you. Um, but, but there's a couple of shifts uh related to our plans and uh one that we suspect will be welcome. Uh, we always start in the same place with a solid philosophical foundation. We've not departed from this thinking uh in our planning. We continue to prioritize student and staff physical and mental health, uh working diligently on providing an optimal learning experience. Communication is key always, but particularly in this context. Uh, and we've made a concerted effort to prioritize uh the needs of those who we struggle to meet the most in the remote uh learning format, which uh we are quickly moving out of. Uh, at our last, uh, at our last meeting, we spoke at length about the updated DESI guidance released on March ninth. Quickly, the guidance called for five days of an in-person learning to begin at the elementary level on April fifth, followed by five days of in-person learning uh to begin at the middle school level on April twenty eighth. High school guidance is forthcoming in April. Uh, any family who wishes to remain in remote learning absolutely may until the end of the school year, and there are no penalties for any student or family who wishes to remain in remote learning. We've got a number of questions on that. Uh, with this guidance, we've hastened our planning in some areas and refined it in others. Uh, all of the information on this slide reflects ongoing work which we've engaged to prepare for the expansion of, of, of in-person learning. By way of quick update, uh, we held a meeting with representatives, I just mentioned this, from the Teachers and Administrators Union uh earlier this week, along with engineers from both the provider of the purifiers uh and the team that assessed airflow. Uh, I thought that meeting was, was quite successful. Uh, further, we've expanded uh pool testing now uh to three schools, uh classical English and Shoemaker with more forthcoming. Uh, in short, we continue to expand our safety planning and inflammation in preparation for uh kindergartens next, next week and beyond. Uh, in our last meeting, I spoke briefly about the need for simultaneous instruction and the expansion of in-person learning. Uh, quickly, this means that live instruction uh will occur for those learning remotely at home, in addition to uh those who are uh, uh, remote, uh, reporting uh in person. Uh, we expect our Bluetooth uh microphones to arrive any day now. We've already provided the necessary setups for kindergarten classrooms. Also, a team of teachers and administrators are finalizing a guidance document. I actually just saw the draft of it, it's really, really uh rich uh on simultaneous instruction and will go out to staff early next week. At our last meeting, I provided for you a timeline for expanding in-person learning. Uh, by way of review, we will expand in-person learning beginning with our kindergarteners next Thursday, April first, with all students receiving uh in-person learning opportunities by the week of May third. That was movement one, uh, a movement to hybrid to begin. Uh, that movement uh was followed by a second wherein we shift elementary school from hybrid to five full days per week. Uh, that would happen on May third. At the time, uh, last time we, uh, we met, uh, we couldn't quite yet uh confirm uh whether or not we could do five full days at the middle school. Have an update for you on that uh in the next slide. Uh, in high school, again, we await uh further guidance uh next month. Um, we also discussed in our last meeting a waiver to begin uh five days of in-person learning at the elementary level beyond the established deadline of April fifth. Our plan called for five days of in-person learning at the elementary level on May third. DESI supported that waiver request, but required us to move the start dates for hybrid learning for grades one and two um and three to five back two days, uh, or up two days, depending on how you look at it. Um, this would call for uh a start to hybrid learning in those grades uh in grades one and two on April fifth and grades three to five on April twelfth. Over the past two weeks, we've collected lots of input and feedback from families. We've also appealed, uh, peeled back uh every analytical layer of transitioning back for in-person learning. By state directive, grades one and two and three to five will begin in-person learning two days earlier than our original timeline indicated. What is more, we will expand in-person learning for students in those grades all five days. To be clear, kindergarten will begin on April first, the week of April fifth kindergarten, which remains on an AM PM schedule, and grades one and two will attend five days. As originally planned, fallen students will return on April seventh, and then students in grades three to five will return on April twelfth for five days a week of in-person The timeline for middle school and high school remains precisely the same. With a better understanding of the data for those who intend to return, we feel comfortable and confident offering five days of in-person learning beginning May tenth for all middle As we discussed in our last meeting, I would come back to this space uh and highlight an intention to pursue a waiver for middle school on the timeline for five days of in-person learning. DESI guidance calls for all middle schools to begin five days of in-person instruction on April twenty eighth. We will begin five days of in-person instruction at the middle school level on May tenth, and that's what the waiver uh will, will, will seek. As you might imagine, much of the work, uh, much of the work day involves lots of planning, uh, lots of meeting to work to prepare for next Thursday and beyond. With the shifts that I announced in this meeting, a communication is going out to all families tomorrow with an update, uh, and building principals will be at the ready to respond to any question or concerns. Beyond that, we are preparing to launch and we're thrilled to welcome our students back. Happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Uh, I have a quick question that I see on Member Sadoway has a question. I just have a question on pool testing, Dr. Tutwiler, and then, and then, after, um, Member Sadoway. So I just, uh, I, I'd just like to know how that's going. I know it's, it's, is it um, is it fully implemented or, so I just wanna know an update, if you could, on, on how it's working?
Glad to. Uh, so it is rolled out in three schools, English, Classical and Shoemaker. Um, my, I'd actually just had a meeting with the nurses today. Um, it is not a light lift. Um, it is quite a bit of work, but I'll tell you, Mayor, that the biggest challenge related to it is uh procuring the consents uh from families. Um, you know, as we uh talked about uh in previous meetings, some of the delay uh was not due to anything um uh in the Linn Public Schools purview or, or power. Uh, DESI matched us with, with our uh provider uh a little bit later than I think uh they may be promised. Uh, and then that uh company was a little slow to get us the materials, uh, both the uh supplies and the training materials. Uh, so we are moving uh as quickly as possible with, again, the paperwork piece as well as um, uh, you know, the training and so forth, uh, but it is moving, uh, which we feel good about.
And I'd just make like to, um, make a point before I go to Member Sadoway. Maybe this is the appropriate time to say if, if people are concerned about consent, it is a test to, and, and this is a real opportunity for us with the pool testing to identify and help us, as you work hard with your team to plan in-person learning. Uh, the pool testing is a key part of that, so I would just, you know, um, in, in a positive way, urge um all parents uh, uh, that this is an important part of us moving forward so to be, to get those consents in, to allow us to make sure that we can continue to make sure, we can continue to ensure that, you know, we're safely and appropriately um reopening to in-person learning. So I, I think uh, I would just um make that point and uh hopefully we can all publicly make that um, uh, request to the families that this is an important part of our, uh, our efforts to move forward and make sure we can get students back into in-person learning. So thanks for the update on that. Member Sadoway, then Member Ford?
Thank you. Um, so I just have a couple of questions, um, Dr. Tutwiler. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a product of Linn Public Schools. You know, I have um had some amazing teachers that have always advocated for me and always followed me throughout the year. Just because you go up a grade doesn't mean that teacher forgets about you. You know, to this day, I'll see a teacher and she'll know my name, and she'll wanna know, uh, you know, where, where, where I'm at in life. And uh, it's, it's, one of the key things, and i- it's, it's, it's strange that now we're talking about going back in person, we were just talking about funding ventilation systems in our building and talking about how, how old they are. Uh, but um, aside from now taking the steps uh to help um improve certain areas of our buildings, I, I did wanna applaud the city and the school district for setting up the vaccination stations for our educators, because I know that that was a, a huge um concern for, for educators um and, and Linn public school staff and, and I, I'm, I'm happy that um, that was made available. Uh, I, I do have uh just a question, was that um, was it a success, would you say? Or would you say that uh there's still some hesitation uh in that area?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's uh, it was successful uh from the standpoint of being convenient and accessible and uh, you know, I don't know barefoot and deliberately to share numbers, but uh I'm going to, uh, you know, there were, there were.
You can share ours as part of the discussion, in terms of general.
Yeah, so uh, you, you know, that, that first uh educator uh focused uh vaccination clinic uh made available eight hundred uh appointments or eight hundred vaccines, whi- which is fantastic. Uh, about four hundred people showed. Uh, I don't know who they are and uh, and that's okay, but um, uh, this was something that was sent out, shared by the district, and people took advantage of it. I'll also say um that uh I understand that a number of staff, uh, present company included, have been able to find appointments elsewhere. Uh, CVS on, on, on Boston Street, uh, people have been finding success in, in getting the vaccine uh elsewhere if they intend to get it. Uh, so I, I, you know, I would say it was successful and I would say, you know, I'd be guessing about the percentage of folks who have actually, actually gotten it. Uh, but I would say that uh just based on my personal experience and what I hear pretty frequently, that it's, it's, it's not hard to get one these days, if you're an educator.
And, and just to, to, my follow-up question was, you know, obviously, um, we're preparing, um, uh, you're planning, you're preparing and you're implementing these things, obviously at, at the, at the uh direction of, 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 of DESI, uh, because, you know, obviously the um, uh commissioner got the, the special powers to force districts back into um, into school. Um, one of the things that I, I am uh getting questions from, from, from families and, and obviously my wife as well, is there's just a confusion around whether or not the kids that stay remote, if that's gonna count or not, because uh what's being pushed out says that if it's remote learning, it does not count.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you for that question, and um, it's actually in the memo that will go out tomorrow. There is no penalty, there is no, you know, any student who, uh, our family decides to keep a, a student home, uh, that student will, will, you know, still engage with his or her learning and, 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 and his or her classes uh in the same way that they had. Uh, he or she will be, you know, provided that they satisfy the requirements and be promoted, just like any other student. Um, it's the district model um of, of remote that's not allowed. The individuals can still choose to have that.
Okay, great, great. Uh, and uh, obviously, this, the rest of the school year looks the same, or is that something that we're still looking for, for direction from um, uh, DESI?
As far as the duration or?
Correct.
Yeah, no, I, it's, 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 uh, we are still headed for um, uh, a, an end of the school year date of uh June seventeenth. Uh, I've not seen anything to suggest otherwise, I'd be surprised uh if there was. Um, you know, one of the things uh that we're, we're obviously beginning to think about and building a framework around is uh summer learning opportunities. Uh, hope to be able to, or I expect to be able to come and do a formal presentation uh in this space uh in April. Um, but uh, no, the school year uh ends on June seventeenth.
Thank you.
Nothing to do there.
Okay, Member Ford, then Member Gaetley, then Member Castellanos, and then Member Ford, I just wanna make a quick point, I think. I just wanna thank uh our Health Department, uh, and all of the people that worked really hard to put together the operation, both for uh the educator um, uh exclusive um at Breed that went on last week, as well as ongoing, you know, be a number of other, uh, but just as importantly, the operation at Linn Tech, and this, it's just amazing, uh, and I, I don't think that the recognition, and I said this the other day on a, on a call, I'm on weekly calls with um North Shore Medical Center, Linn Community Health Center, and our Department of, uh, you know, Health Department, as well as my Chief of Staff. Uh, the operation, uh, the ability to make access to people in the community and how uh amazing the work is going on and how um efficient uh they are in, in moving through hundreds and hundreds of people at the Linn Tech operation as well and doing these other locations has been, I think, has done as well, if not, and I'll be a parochial, i- if not better than any other location in the Commonwealth. We've heard nothing but praises on that, and the only reason it's that way, cause so many people have come together to really make this operation work. And um, as Dr. Tutwiler said, we, you know, there's other, you know, you can still get um, sign up at Linn Tech as uh appointments are available, uh, if not at the Breed location five days a week. And we're hoping um, you know, we potentially with available vaccine, be doing um potentially six thousand um vaccinations a week at the Linn Tech location. So there's, it's, it's amazing what goes on there, how they've really stood that up, uh, continue to do it day in and day out with uh different kinds of vaccines, two, two uh, two different vaccine dates and all of that, so, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say how hard people have worked to make that a reality, and I'm really proud of the work that's going on, and I'm really proud to say that Linn has really stepped up in a big way to, to take this on and as we've been so impacted, we're able to uh try and move forward with this on, on getting everyone vaccinated. So uh, I wanna thank everyone publicly for that. Dr. Tutwiler, if you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, just a, just a quick uh data point uh that I was a- aware of, but, but needed permission to share. Uh, the Linn Teachers Union did survey uh its membership uh and got about a thousand responses, and ninety percent of those who responded have received uh either the first dose, dose or are fully vaccinated, so that's, that's pretty, that's pretty wonderful.
Yeah, it's great news, it's great news. Member Ford, then Member Gaetley, then Member Castellanos, and then Member Nicholson?
Before I ask my question, I wanna echo what the mayor said about the, the job being done down at Linn Tech, uh, they've done a phenomenal job. We're getting calls from friends in other communities that, you know, Linn has become the envy of a lot of other communities, they've done such a great job. Um, a quick question I wanna ask, Doctor, you had sent a a lot about saying there's a potential transportation issue with the number of bus drivers available. Do you in any way see that im- implementing the um impacting the rollout?
Yep, I do. Uh, that that um, I mean, respectfully, I would I would uh take the word potential out uh and say that um and sort of put it in these terms. Um, there's a statewide bus driver uh issue or shortage to the tune of seven to eight hundred uh drivers short statewide. Uh, the way that looks in Lynn is uh we have approximately eighteen bus drivers, uh we normally have uh over forty. Uh, so we are struggling mightily uh around transportation. Uh, we are this close on a on a plan that I hope to be able uh to communicate in short order. I purposely left it out cuz I don't wanna uh create confusion around it, but uh the transportation's a real issue. Um, and it's not, you know, you know, there are a a myriad uh a number of reasons or myriad um lots of different reasons why that exists. I think that community, unfortunately, communities that um required uh transportation later in the uh in the year are the ones that um are are struggling the most with, you know, with drivers. Uh, I mean, we have the equipment, but we do not have the drivers. Uh, you'll recall, and this is something, just to be clear, that uh, you know, the district has been working in partnership with NRT uh since the holidays. I mean, if you follow our uh Facebook page, I mean, we've been advertising bus driver positions for them, uh attempting to get to fill those positions, but it has not yielded. Um, you know, we we've done so to to little avail. Looked at every, turned every stone in terms of looking at other companies and thinking outside of the box, but um, you know, some of the struggle exists around uh, you know, students needing, you know, special equipment and things of that nature, so uh, we're doing the best that we that we can. We we do have uh a plan. There are some things that need to be worked out, uh I'd say we're very close.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Gately.
I also wanna thank the Health Department for their wonderful job. Especially, I'm hearing great things about Breed and Tech. So they did awesome. Um, I hear from my brother who lives in Havel how difficult it is to get to a shot. It's really difficult for a lot of other towns and cities, Mayor, so you, I feel you did an excellent job, so the Health Department. Dr. Tuttwiler, my question for you is um are we gonna be able to have like graduations, the seniors, middle school and elementary? Have you thought that far ahead yet?
Yeah, so the the graduation guidance came out uh late last week uh from DESI uh and there are some specific criteria that need to be met. Um, I mean, clearly there's a strong push for outdoor events, which we had uh were able to pull off with some degree of success. What I could tell you from memory, cuz we're still working on the planning of it, but uh um, they, you know, there there needs to be some limits to the number of people who attend. Uh, I believe the max is six people per graduate. Uh, but if you think about, you know, uh some of our high schools with pretty large classes, that would be a lot of people. Um, you need all uh groups or families need to be kept six feet apart. Uh, so you know, that that would also impact the number of people who can attend for a graduate. The expectation is that um, you know, there'd be some sort of ticketing system, lots of safeguards uh in control, uh and that the ceremonies be brief. They actually wrote that in there, which you know, uh I think some graduates might appreciate uh if they know me and my willingness to to go on, but uh um, you know, we 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 have the guidance, uh we had already started uh working on it prior to the guidance coming out uh and hope to be able to communicate specifics uh in the coming weeks. Deb, I don't know if you wanna add to that.
I mean, I will say that we've already um reserved Manning Field for two dates. Uh, we already have been in contact with a stage company to set up a scenario there. Uh, but we are at the beginning stages with the high school principals and uh planning out the details. Uh, as Dr. Tuttwiler said, the guidance just came out um a little less than a week ago. And so we're teasing through that, but there are definitely limitations to how many people we can do.
Well, it will still be wonderful after like last year and everything.
Well, I I would note that um, you know, Dr. Tuttwiler said some degree of success and one of our uh high school principals texted me and said some degree of success. It was fabulous. It was a big success, though. I think uh uh we will do our graduates proud, I promise you that.
No offense, they know I love them, no offense.
Thank you. Member Castellanos.
I just wanna echo my colleagues, just the Health Department, everyone in in involved in the operation to get our um educators and city vaccinated. I actually got to take part in the process. Um, I received my second Moderna on three seventeen. Um, it was it was a smooth process um from from the firefighters to the Lake Committee, how all the partners involved, it was really, it was smooth and and it really was um was alleviating to have that type of um hope and stability right there, so I was uh very grateful. Uh, so I just wanna ask some clarifying questions about our uh transition plan. Where, so could we get some more clarification on where pre-K and SPED programs are? You know, you know, their in-person stand, where do they fit into the five-day return? Also, if a parent wants to, uh say if, you know, they they start off in remote and they wanna come back past the deadline, are they able to? Are we gonna just, are we not, are we not gonna permit that?
Yeah, the the pre-K programming is wrapped up in that uh transportation piece that I was just speaking to. Um, I, again, am this close to communicating uh something to those families early next week. Uh, I think we'll be able to say what what's gonna happen uh in in relation to those programs. Uh, with respect to uh families who changed their mind, I mean, um, I I will tell you, I've received a message from a family who chose um uh the remote uh option through the Remote Learning Academy, uh the TECA program at the beginning of the year and said, hey, listen, I would really like for my kid to come back in person, and you said that we had to stay in this for the duration of the year, and I'm like, I did, but I also extended to you uh a survey, and if you'd like to send them back, then you can. Uh, and so I I think um, you know, that should reflect uh, you know, what we know now is different from what we know then and and certainly wanna embrace uh every opportunity to put kids in the best position uh to 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 learn and grow and be supported uh for the remainder of the year based on family preference. I will say, though, uh it it will get very, very messy if we start um, you know, if the pendulum is swinging back and forth with people changing their mind. Uh, and so uh what I would say um uh, what I would say about that is that there there'll be flexibility to a degree, but um you know, uh w- we've provided families as much information as I think they need to make the decision. Uh, we've given them some time to do so, uh and we're asking them to make a decision because changes in that uh can impact ultimately uh safety, and so uh, right now, we're we're, you know, there'll be flexibility to a degree is what I would say.
Uh, Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally echo my colleagues in in thanking the Health Department for the for that operation and 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 thanks also to the to the families for uh dealing with what they have of the last year and getting students ready to come back, and of course, the educators, there's gonna be we're again asking the educators to step up and 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 do a lot to make this work um in 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 teaching the simultaneous instruction, and we're and we're very grateful for that. Uh, and thanks also to the administration for the for the thoughtful planning. Uh, the first question I had was about the 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 middle school waiver. Um, did you get any, you know, particular feedback in the first waiver process that we went to, that we went through? And you know, how many any visibility into the second waiver? I know they have that like office set up for for districts to to work um with DESI and 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 do you have any preview there?
Yeah, I'll say one promise that they kept was that um you know, upon submission of the waiver, that you would hear back pretty quickly, and that absolutely did happen. Uh, I made myself the point person and I received a call on my cellphone not long after I submitted it. Uh, they asked a couple of questions about the first waiver. Uh, I responded and then they got back uh days later with, you know, where they were, um, where they were gonna land and, you know, of course, attempting to embrace um consistency across the state. You can't have, you know, schools doing a bunch of different things. Uh, but I used that opportunity to also share what our thinking was uh in relation to middle school and I don't have it in writing, but uh from the individual who with whom I spoke, who's uh, you know, uh I I what I would call a decision maker there, um our plan uh is is fine uh as it relates to middle school, so I I don't foresee, I don't have that in writing, uh but I have uh I have that verbally, so uh I think our plan for middle school will stay as is.
Okay, thank you. And the other the other question about the bus drivers, do you do you have a sense if uh NRT has any feedback from former drivers as to uh some of the some some of what's causing this the shortage? Uh, are there are there people that are concerned about um, you know, potential safety issues given everything that's going on? Um, you know, I I there also could be a potential planning issue, I'm sure, and that that people wo- would would not have been able to have the work ready when they expected it and and have found employment elsewhere, but, you know, depending on the cause might might affect our uh obviously our our strategy to try to address it, if there's things that we can do to try to uh address any underlying issues there are in in recruitment.
Yeah, so I'll start with the low-hanging fruit, um and and I'll ask Kevin to 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 step in also, you know. Uh, you know, the the easy things were uh, hey, this person um uh lives in Lynn and have has kids that are remote and um doesn't have childcare. Hey, no problem. Like, we we will, we will call, you know, boys and girls, Y M C A, like, we can set up a pod situation um to to allow those folks to go back to work. Uh, I I, you know, this is anecdotal, uh but there is there is still, I mean, there's fear out there. Uh, and some people are fearful of riding on buses, uh you know, and on some of our buses, the uh, you know, sort of compliance around mask wearing with some students who have sensory issues um and and things of that nature. Uh, you know, some bus drivers are fearful of that and and not prepared or uh not um, you know, in a place where they feel comfortable uh working in that scenario. And then I, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, one of the unfortunate um scenarios of, you know, doing most of the year remote is that uh the company shifted uh, you know, drivers to other communities where they provide that service to fulfill needs there, uh and when we came back ready, you know, uh those drivers just aren't available to drive. Kevin, do you wanna fill in any gaps that I might have created or left?
I think a lot of them, and I think that the some, well, what we've heard is the same effect is that those could use describing uh what's happening, and some people are, you know, probably just employed and uh other positions elsewhere, so I think those are the last two pieces that I also contribute a lot.
I think you just echoed what I said, if I don't know if anybody caught that.
Okay, yeah, there's broken up a little bit there, but so uh I think w- w- that that, uh thank you for for sharing that, you know, I wonder if um ma- maybe we've already done this, but if there's a way to uh communicate specifically with those drivers about opportunities to get vaccinated um and uh uh, you know, take that operation that we were all uh eh uh sort of uh praising earlier and use that as a as a tool for 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 recruitment. Um, and also I wonder if there's a way for us to, you know, work with that office that has been set up at DESI to to try to facilitate the reopening and get some help in in asking the, if this is a statewide issue and part of the issue is that some districts have drivers because they returned earlier, to get the state to step in there, because that's an equity issue, right? You think about which communities had to delay in-person learning, there were the communities that were harder hit uh by the virus and i- i- and that's compounding the disparity for us to not be able to return because of all, cuz be be because of the transportation issue, so I I I think that would hopefully be something that we could talk about with with the state there.
For sure, I the the vaccine has been, I mean, they're 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 eligible, uh that's been offered, and uh I was not on the the this particular call, but I understand that that has been communicated uh to the powers that be at the uh State Office for Transportation. Uh, and I this, it was kinda one of those things, not much they can do about it, but um I mean, we'll continue to push, and I think, as I mentioned before, I I we we might have a plan to make this work. Uh, but it's gonna require lots of communication and cooperation um and partnership rather uh with families.
Thank you.
Um, Member Capola.
Didn't we continue to pay them a portion of that money?
Oh, this year or last year?
Um, well, I'm uh, you're right, it wa- it was probably last year, but did we renew contracts with them for when we were going back and were they still receiving a a a portion of money?
I'm gonna need Kevin to to uh back me up here, uh but I believe that um there uh there's language in their contract that says that if the service isn't being provided, then they don't get paid. Uh, and that 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 was the case uh last spring, um, which as you might imagine, um they took issue with, but um, uh Kevin, can you help me out on uh this year?
This year, only they're working, not paying.
We can't hear you, buddy.
Sorry, I'll try again.
No. I couldn't make it out.
Really breaking up, Kevin.
You can text me that, Kevin, and I can check.
Okay, good. Okay, I then, that's that's fine, you can pass on that. Thank you.
I'll get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions related to the opening? Okay, um well, on to the net, that, so um that's uh we will continue to keep us updated, Dr. Tuttwiler, as we move through the uh towards the opening. As things go on.
And is there, is there, is it, there's no need for uh a vote around the waiver? We didn't do that for elementary, so I assume not, but I just.
I I don't know that we have to. Uh, I I guess we can ask Joan. I don't think we have to. I think there's an it's uh up to you to put the waiver in
Yeah.
on behalf of the of the district.
Yeah, I think it's regulatory, so I I, you know.
I think that's appropriate. Um, next on the uh the final uh piece on the agenda before the superintendent's report is ratification of votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee meeting. Member Capola, would you like to uh?
Yes, we had two votes, and um Deb, if you had the wording on it, if not, I would ask um Sadi White that maybe could um give the wording on that. For the budget. All right, the first one was for the budget item, exactly, and the Joab.
Yep, so the motion, do you want me to say what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So the motion was uh to uh transfer um, one second. Motion to transfer eighteen thousand eighty-six dollars from the Paris Substitute Account to the Business Administrator's Salary Account to fund the uh the uh manager of um, one second, I just need to get the wording again, sorry. The manager of financial operation position.
And there was a second and to move it to the full committee.
So, um, Member Sato White, would you like to make that motion for the full committee?
Yep, motion uh for the full committee is uh to transfer eighteen thousand eighty-six dollars from the Paris Substitute Account to the Bi- Business Administrator's Salary Account uh to fund the manager of financial operation position.
Motion is on the table, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh without any additional discussion, a roll call is required. Second, uh, without any additional discussion, a roll call is required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And the second, second motion was in regards to the kindergarten licensure and if Ms. Gately could.
Yes, the motion was, um, to make a motion not to make the certification and EL part of qualification to serve as kindergarten teachers and win public schools.
And there was a second that was moved to the full committee.
So that, that is in front of the full committee. Is there a motion to, um, is there a motion on the floor to uh, uh, address the vote at the uh, of the sub, the Personnel Subcommittee?
Do you want me to read it again?
So motion on the table, um, is there, um, second? Then there's a motion and second, I would ask.
Can I just ask Attorney Myhouse, the, um, is it a yes vote if you support it? A no vote if you do not support that motion? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Capola.
Thank you.
So no, just to be clear, a no vote would be to move, um, to allow the administration to move forward. A yes vote would be to um, not allow that proposal to move forward.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, there's been, uh, there was plenty of discussion at the Subcommittee meeting, so there's been a motion and a second, roll call is required.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Nicholson?
No.
No. Mr. Sadowite?
No.
Mayor McGee?
No.
No. Motion carried.
The last thing on the agenda is superintendent's report. I know, Dr. Tuttwiler, do you have, uh, uh, I think we've had a lot of discussions. I don't know if there's anything else you need to add, or you do have a report. We're happy to listen to it. You're on, you're on mute, Dr. Tuttwiler.
I got you. Uh, I, I, I do have a report, um. Uh, it's fairly lengthy, but I will give you a high-level overview. Um, if you since uh maybe November, uh, maybe December, if you've been uh following the news, uh, nationwide, there's been a, um, an issue around FAFSA completion, uh, for college-going seniors. Uh, you know, in some cases, they're thirty, forty percent lower uh than in previous years. Uh, you know, for some, you might say, well, what's the big deal? You know, a student doesn't create, doesn't complete that, uh, it's not a big deal, but it actually is because ninety percent of the students who cr- who complete a FAFSA actually matriculate to college. And fifty-five percent who don't, do not. So, um, the, uh, we've been tracking it, uh, since the month of January. Uh, and in our most recent, uh, data set, uh, in March, um, you know, we do see some concerning trends. Um, Lynn, uh, Lynn Classical and Lynn English are both uh, down in terms of the number of FAFSA completions uh, effective, uh, the number of FAFSA applications that have been completed by March first. Uh, Lynn Tech, however, uh, is, uh, at the highest it's been in four years. I'm not uh, so I, you know, uh, good things happening there uh, in terms of FAFSA completion. And there's all sorts of reasons why uh, a student might not have completed that. Uh, maybe it's the, the disruptive nature of the time. Uh, maybe it's access, maybe it's understanding. Uh, but in any case, we're taking the bull by the horns. We applied for, uh, and got a, um, twenty-eight thousand dollar grant from DESI to support, uh, FAFSA completion. We're partnering with, uh, Salem State and with North Shore Community College to provide supports for, um, our seniors and completing that. Uh, I believe se- seniors have until the end of June to do so. There's a planning meeting that happened, uh, I believe earlier this week. Uh, we plan to launch, um, those supports for families, um, early next month. The other thing that I wanted to make the committee aware of is that our, um, English uh, Language Arts curriculum at the high school level uh, is, is a little bit old. Uh, it's dated, uh, two thousand twelve. Uh, does not come with online, uh, resources, things of that nature. Uh, and so you can expect a presentation at a curriculum Subcommittee meeting, at an upcoming meeting, uh, to lay out a plan for how we intend, uh, to go about identifying a new resource.
Well, I said you had a report, uh, and I know we talked a lot. It's not to limit your, uh, ability to give your full superintendent's report, so, uh, I hope, uh,
That's all right.
Uh, it was not, uh, not any attempt to, uh, limit the information that you always in a great way bring to the committee, so.
The, the entire report will be posted on, uh, on the website tomorrow. I welcome you to read it. It's got graphs with the FAFSA completion stuff uh, on it.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Can I ask a quick question?
Member Nicholson, yes.
Thank you. Uh, just about the FAFSA, uh, completion rates, it, was that? Was the, so that, the, the, I, I see the drop off in the, in the last year. Was the, was the trend generally, like a general increase before that? Um, what, what is it?
Yeah, you know, um, uh, looking at the schools, no. I mean, I would say uh, that there have been differences, uh, each of the past four years. Uh, but as I look at classical and English, uh, those appear to be a little bit notable drop-offs compared to previous years, uh, whereas tech appears to be uh, a notable increase, uh, over previous years. But I'd say, you, you know, not being a mathematician, but, uh, it's within the range of like uh, relatively normal shifts between the years relatively. Uh, probably would need, I mean, at English, uh, had a pretty significant increase last year compared to previous years, uh, and, um, this year, uh, is certainly less than that. Um, but slightly more than two years ago, but less than uh, the year before. So, you know, that's what I mean. It's been about kind of ups and downs, but um, what we don't wanna do is leave to chance, uh, to say this is part of a normal, you know, sort of, uh, progression in terms of completion. We really wanna, um, you know, get support resources set up uh, for kids and families and, and try to get that number as high as possible.
And it, that makes sense. Do we, do we have, do we also get to hear on, on the, the, the number of students that start and don't complete it? Or is it just the number that completed? So can you tell if people are just not?
That's a, that's a good question. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. And I, I, I do know that phenomenon, having experienced it myself with a senior at home because it, it is not, uh, really a sit down and do it all in one fell swoop kinda thing, but, um, I, I'll have to get back to you on whether or not we have data on that.
Okay, yeah, I think that could be a good opportunity to, to, to identify the problem. And just quickly in the curriculum, um, update, I think that's great. I think, you know, particularly with the English Language Arts, uh, seems like a great opportunity to, to work on some of the conversations we had, particularly last summer, uh, around celebrating diverse cultures.
Absolutely. Good opportunity. Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions of the superintendent's report? Uh, there's no other, um, items on the agenda or understand a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, number seconds, uh, requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Great. Thank you all very much. Have a good night. Enjoy the weather on the weekend.
Good night.
Bye, Lorraine.